Next department, our first department on our agenda is the Recreation Department, page eighty-two on your, on your books. Director Bill Garfield is up. I got Recreation Department. Apparently I had an old agenda book. Sorry, Mr. Garfield. First on the agenda on the new automatic agenda book is the Boys and Girls Club. Page ninety-two. Good evening, ma'am.
Essential part of our educational planning. So I want to leave you with this quote, which I used last time before Dr. Koleski and Sean Smith will speak to the engagement survey. Diversity is having a seat at the table, inclusion is having a voice, and belonging is having
I have about two hundred and fifty-six kids every single day at the club, whether they're partaking in our after-school program or our eighty different enrichment programs. There's a lot of activity and love and positivity happening down at the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm so grateful for all of your support for the past thirteen years I've been doing this.
Alderman Jenkins? Nope. Alderman Fowler, sorry.
Now, could you just repeat how many kids you serve a day? I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear.
Definitely, yeah. We have about two hundred and fifty-six kids a day, and we serve about one thousand and fifty kids this year since July first.
Alderman Casey?
Thank you. Do you, Megan, I don't know if you still do this, but can, it used to be, I think we still do it, but like, it used to be, when you joined Boys and Girls Club, you were like, you track your report card, and it's one, you encourage to go up one grade level, no, to one grade when you take the new students in?
So we haven't tracked that in a little while. That's a really good idea to go back and look at that again. We kind of stopped during COVID because the homework situation changed for kids. So we were doing a little less homework help because there was a little less homework. So we're looking at doing different enrichment and education activities. But that's a good idea. I'll look into that.
And what it was a success rate?
Oh my goodness. I want to say like eighty percent of the kids increased like one letter grade.
Thanks.
Alderman Marlowe?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Megan, first of all, comment, thank you for the great work you and your staff do there. How much is your budget overall? I know we contribute this, but an overall budget?
Our total budget is one point seven, which has grown significantly in the thirteen years from when I started.
And what are the other funding sources that you have?
So there's a multitude of funding. We have a ton of special events. So thank you to everyone that came to the gala last week. We have our golf tournament with the Montano family. We have the five K race. I write a ton of grants. We have a great deal of both government and non-government grants that we get. We have a lot of corporate donors and individual supporters.
Thank you, Megan.
Of course.
Anyone else have any questions for the Boys and Girls Club? You're getting off easy tonight, Megan. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. Next department on our agenda is the Milford Police Department, Chief Keith Mello.
Page forty-three.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman? Good evening.
You can begin your presentation anytime.
So I just wanted to point out, in the budget, you'll see a few things that weren't there last year. First, the cars, the patrol cars. Up until about three years ago, those patrol cars historically were in the operating budget. Three years ago, Mayor Blake preferred to have those funded through the vehicle acquisition account, and so I put them back in the budget. The funding is still the same, just being funded under a different mechanism. And the reason I put them in the budget is, again, when you look historically over the last fifty years, they were always in the operating budget. But for that last three years, you'll also notice that we have in there the payroll, the salaries for our licensed, our social workers. Back in twenty twenty, there was some legislative initiatives and a push towards hiring social workers to work with law enforcement, either within the law enforcement agency or to partner with law enforcement. In fact, there was, there was legislation passed that required all police departments to submit a feasibility study. And we were fortunate because we had already started looking at such a program. I had presented to Mayor Blake at the time and then to you folks, and we were able to take advantage of ARPA funds to pay their salaries for the first two years. That was a decision made by City Hall, I assume by you folks. That, we began our hiring, the program was developed and approved at the end of twenty-one, and we began our hiring in January of twenty-twenty-two. That, those funds are going to dry up, and so that funding, that those funding for the salaries are in this budget. I have both our social workers here this evening, along with Captain Del Monte, and they'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. I know I had made a presentation to it a number of years ago, but we have some, you know, we can provide that information again, and we can give you some, some data if you prefer, if that will help with your decision. But other than that, certainly happy to take your questions.
Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
And the rest of the department. I would assume the social workers are full-time?
Full-time, yes.
So are they on the road all of the time? Could you just describe their day, please?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat your questions and echo?
The, the full-time social workers?
Yes.
They're full-time?
Correct.
And could you describe their day? Are they on the road, meaning in patrol cars?
Sure.
What's your job description?
Absolutely. And again, here, if you want to ask any specifics, but they're in their office, they work, they handle referrals. Those referrals come either direct to them or often they come to a police officer who has had a case either that evening or even that day. And they make connections with, for others. They can provide some service, but they liaison with other agencies that can provide additional services. They will also go out to the field, if we need them to go out to the field, and many times they have. So the, it, I wouldn't do it justice just within thirty seconds to explain to you all the things that they do. Their caseload is tremendous. I wish I had a dozen more. But if your question, and I'm just surmising that the question may be, do they, do they take the place of police officers or do they respond to calls where police officers, and that's a question we always get, do they respond to calls in place of police officers? They don't. They're a supplement to our, our efforts.
Just a follow-up. So they, they do, do they ever ride with the police with, in a car with a, on a certain call or?
Normally, they'll respond in their own vehicle. They've, during their training, they have done ride-alongs to understand what goes on. But normally, they'll respond on their own with their own vehicle at the request of either our dispatch center or the police officer that's on the scene.
How do they, how do they care for the referral? A referral comes into the police department, do they go out and visit? Does the client comes, come to the police department?
Both those things happen. So normally, a typical case would be, if it happened, say, after hours, there'd be a police report, the referral would be made to the social workers in the morning, they would either go out and visit the client, or they would set up a, an interview or a meeting, a consultation. Often, it's both. They spend a lot of times meeting with people and families, a lot of kids, certainly families that are in crisis that have challenges that are beyond our expertise as police officers. I think we're really good at responding to calls, but when it comes to follow-up, that's not what we do, but that's what they do. And then they provide that connection with other services. Often, there is, there's multiple meetings with multiple family members. Again, I actually have a, we're not going to do a PowerPoint, but we put together something that we could hand out to you that may help you or may just, you may just find of interest. Garen, can I have those if you don't mind, or could you pass those out to each member, please? And there's some data in there that you might find helpful, and there are some descriptions as to the type of cases they've done. I think there's three scenarios, in a real-life scenario, obviously the names aren't included. I think you might find that really, it talks about the origins, it talks about what they do.
Thank you.
And I know there's a lot of data there, so that, really, that's for your leisure. Or at your leisure, I should say.
Just while we're waiting, how many referrals do we get in a year or a month, a week, however you might define that?
So I'm going to ask that question of, ladies, can somebody help me with how many referrals you've had, say, in the last year or last month? I know it's in there. A little over three hundred? Thank you. Can I have a copy of that?
Three hundred, uh, year?
Is that annual, Caitlin? About three hundred. It breaks it down by month, and it breaks it down by type of incident as well. It talks about their initial response, it talks about their follow-up response, it details the providers that they partner with and liaison. You'll see in there that we have two social workers, but we also have one part-time social worker that's in a, a part-time status. And we have two graduate students that are in the social worker program, and usually were from Sacred Heart or other universities. And it talks about how the referrals are done. And then if you look at the data sheet in there, it breaks it down by month, and it talks about each type of service that the social workers provide and the, the number. Now, the number is just, you know, these are just, this is just data. It doesn't really go into how involved these, these cases are. So if you look at some of the, the case studies at the end, that may help you as well. And some of the things that they work on are domestic violence, elderly services, health and safety concerns, housing, interpersonal conflicts, juvenile problems with kids, issues with kids, mental health, recovery and addiction services, homelessness, supportive assistance, crime victims. So you can see there's quite a bit there. And these are the kind of calls that we go on, on a daily basis. And if we have a social worker with us, they'll come out, but most of the work is, the important work is done on follow-up. People often come to us and, and expect that us to provide some follow-up service. And our services that we provide as police officers are referrals, and that's usually to an outside referral agency. But this, we're, we're meeting head-on, if not that day, the next day. And if you look, there's been over, since January of twenty twenty-two, in just a little over four years, the social workers have seen seven hundred and fifty-nine individuals or clients, as they refer to them. They've had over three thousand interactions between social workers and client service providers. You know, if you recall, and many of you have been doing this a long time, the issues with homelessness and how we would, you know, we just kind of developed, you know, we kind of created a program working with other partners within the city, and we rely on their assistance. But it would require a police officer to stay involved for a prolonged period of time. When we have those kind of situations, we refer those to our social workers, and especially if they come in during the day. And as you can see, as you probably know, and you can see from some of the data here, we've seen great success. And it's really what public safety should look like and is going to look like. In fact, most police departments have a social worker program either embedded or partnering with a social worker program. And those that are, are finding ways to do that. So we, we thought that the, you know, this was a good head start, having ARPA funds to kick the program off, and, and what you're seeing here are the results.
Thank you. I think this will be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, how many police cars are you asking for this year?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many police cars?
So you're asking for eight cars? I just wanted just to, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you've been doing this a while as well.
Sure.
When I took over as chief, we used to get twelve cars. Twelve cars and then two to three admin cars or specialty cars a year. Now, the cars, they last longer, but they cost a lot more. And so we're comfortable with eight. We think that eight provides a first-line, it keeps our first-line cars in good working order, and we have that replacement plan where they go from first line to second line, and then we move those over to the detective bureau, and then ultimately, we'll trade them in when we bid for new cars.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Beatty?
Through you, Chairperson D. Trump. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for all you do, and also the men and women of your department. I thought it was very important that you said that you put the cars back into the budget, that that was the one time. I've served long enough to know that that's the way it used to be. And so you're adding it, if it's a surprise to anybody, it's just because it's reinstated the way that you have told us that you prefer. And then, secondly, I think I share with Alderman Vitale a place on bridges long-term. And we've had these discussions, there's a literature about social work and being embedded in any delivery system, community health, nursing, and doing the referral and the follow-up and cementing the work and not distracting the police from their primary function. So we had it. The Board of Aldermen has had the idea, the notion that ARPA funding started, social work embedded in, whatever it is, education, public safety, and soon probably fire, and that there's an expectation that this will be a budgetary item going forward. So I just wanted to reemphasize that's what I got from your presentations. Is that correct?
That is. I think, in my interactions with, you know, many people, that, that this is what people expect of modern-day law enforcement. And when we just look at what took place in, you know, via legislation and the discussions and, and the task forces that were put together, so, you know, I think we're a model. No, I know we're a model. And I was talking to Captain Del Monte last week, and he was telling me about the different departments, communities that are calling around and saying, how do you do this? See, we were fortunate, and I think it's referenced in the first page of this presentation, where we partnered with Dr. Logan, and she was out east at the time, and she accepted Milford to be, to partner with. We were the first ones down here. And, and look, there's some great program. I think Stanford has a really good program. There's a number of departments that do a really good job. But I think we got into this early on, and we're, we have a very good unit that is a model for many agencies.
And secondly, to piggyback on that, when you spoke to us in the presentation, I said, thank you for your efforts with this particular department. We're all proud of Milford, this law enforcement, but it's also the role you play outside, a leadership role in things like this, the changing police function and teaching us about it. And then, lastly, I had two instances this year, since the last time that you were in front of us, of needing a, having a secretary car to us, doesn't matter what for, for. I do not think they knew I was in Alder. One time, we were on the street, so they did not know. The other time, I think they knew by the address. But there were men and women, follow up the next day, the police report, they called. It couldn't have been better.
I'm delighted to hear that. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Alderman Marlowe?
Through you, Chair. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Just for clarification from myself, on the police cruisers, the eight cruisers, is that reflected in the Board of Finance recommendation or what you're asked, what you originally asked for?
I believe it's reflected in the Board of Finance recommendation.
Okay. And?
Mayor, is that correct?
There's, there is a difference between the two. So that's what I was just wondering, if the eight reflected which number that really reflected. And then, is there additional costs associated with outfitting the cruiser once you purchase it?
There is, about thirty thousand dollars. So let me just qualify that. So there's, if we can use the equipment, if the equipment's in good working order, and they haven't changed the model year, which we went from Fords to Chevys, and now Chevy, when they change the model year, some of the stuff doesn't fit. In fact, if it goes from Ford to Chevy, almost all of it doesn't fit. That's about thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars. That's what we have to pay for equipment, and we have to pay for labor. Otherwise, it's about close to nine thousand dollars, just really for labor, moving stuff over. A lot of the stuff doesn't last long, and these cars are running twenty-four hours a day, they get banged up, you're putting prisoners in the back, things get damaged. So we have a replacement cycle of, we get about maybe five or six years out of a piece of equipment. So there's a cost involved with replacing, and then there's a cost involved with just the outfit. So right now, with the transition over to Chevys, it's about thirty thousand dollars a car, they're about thirty-three.
Thank you. So my other question is probably a little, maybe broader question, is, I know law enforcement is changing continually, and what is the next trend that you see, and how will that affect our budget? Do you see that as staff or equipment or whatever it might be?
Sure. I'll try to give you the short answer because, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at this, and, and, you know, we had the opportunities to sit in on strategic planning sessions and develop strategic plans for not just our department, but for the entire state. And so there are a couple of things, I think, that are going to happen here and should happen. And two of these, actually, all three of you spoke with the mayor about, two of these we're looking to, to really move, you know, forward on. And the first one is license plate readers. Now, we're late to the party when it comes to license plate readers. We used to have license plate readers on our cruisers, and we, with the cost of cars going up, we just didn't support them, and so we lost those. But most municipalities, certainly in this area, have license plate readers positioned all around their communities. And what a license plate reader does, it's a camera that focuses on, you know, the roadway and the license plates. And what it does is it will read that license plate and that, and access, it'll, it'll compare that to the state database. And so we'll know information about the car, it'll give what's called a hit, depending on how we filter the, the results. It'll tell us if, not only if the car's unregistered or suspended, but more importantly, it tells us if the car is stolen, and, or if the person that's registered that car is wanted for something. And that's more important now than it's ever been because we know that, you know, when we look at our crime in Milford in this area, we know that certain things are going down, but certain things are going up. And regardless if they're going down, people worry about these things, right? If they feel that where they live or where they shop is dangerous, doesn't matter what the data says. But here's what the data does say. Stolen cars are way up, excuse me, stolen cars are up forty-eight percent. Personages and assaults, robberies, those are up as well, not as much. Actually, assaults on police officers are up thirty-eight percent. I'm talking twenty-two to twenty-three. If you factor in twenty-one to twenty-three, those results are even higher. And we know that when people are coming to commit crimes, they're likely stealing a car, and they're driving to wherever, in this case, Milford, and they're going to commit their purse snatch. They're going to commit, you know, at these, you know, I look at these all day long, probably more aware of them than you are, certainly, but they're going to commit these crimes, burglaries, robberies, and then they're going to either leave in a stolen car, or they're likely going to drop that car off and steal another car. While larcenies from vehicles are way down and, and so are catalytic converters, a lot of the people that were showing up were showing up in stolen cars. And there's a couple of reasons why people are stealing cars, and mostly it's young people. But here's what an LPR reader does, a license plate reader does, is it identifies a car stolen, and we get the information in real time, and we likely, knowing where these are occurring, especially on Route One Corridor, Ninety-five Corridor, we always have resources in those areas anyways, and we can put resources right there. We deal with a lot of other agencies telling us, Stratford, West Haven, Bridgeport, Orange is putting them in. We have a car just went into your town. And so they're really helpful at allowing us to identify someone's in a stolen car. Great if we can catch a stolen car, but even better if we can either prevent or catch them committing an act of violence. And so, and, and it also helps us with the investigation of those because we're able to see if something does happen, who was in that area, what cars were in that area. So they've been a great investigative tool, and they've been a great tool for the prevention. Speed cameras are everything, and, and so, well, let me just finish with the, with the, the LPRs. We're working on that. We've identified locations where we're, where we're at. We've talked about where we want them to go. We can expand on it later on. And we've talked about a way to fund those. With that, and that's what, you don't see those in the budget, but we're funding those through seized asset funding. The next step would be speed cameras. And I remember years ago, we talked about speed cameras, and nobody here was really in favor of speed cameras. But I think when you drive around, people are driving, are speeding, they're driving aggressively, they're disobeying traffic signals. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why that is, and, and we know that one of them is because we, they know we're not going to chase them, they know they can run from us, they run from us almost daily. And that's a whole nother conversation of why we do what we do, and it isn't as simple as just saying we should chase them. So it's become difficult to do motor vehicle enforcement. Motor vehicle enforcement is down, not just in Milford, statewide. I mean, way, way down. A lot of reasons for that as well. But, you know, that's part of the reason that people are driving the way they're driving. They don't believe they're going to be caught, they don't fear the consequences. What speed cameras do, and, and there's, there's legislation that require, there's things we have to do, as we talked about, in terms of presenting it to you, we have to get an ordinance, we've got to have a listening session, all those things, we're ready, we're getting ready to ramp up for those. We've, we've met with some vendors, but these speed cameras can go in high-traffic areas, school zones, areas where there's a lot of violations or a lot of accidents. The fine is less than when you get pulled over, but the camera will recognize that you're speeding, it will mail you, the registered owner. I think the first offense is fifty, the second offense is a hundred. That's far less than if you get stopped by a police officer. There's no suggestion that there was any discriminatory practice because that's one of the, you know, the measurements that goes into where these cameras go, to make sure that we're putting them in areas where they're not going to have a discriminatory effect. We believe that they'll be self-sustaining. When you look at the traffic on these roadways, we think after the initial startup, as we talked about, that they'll be self-sustaining. It's just a question, is there an appetite to do it? And, you know, what are the initial startups? And so we're hoping to have LPRs, three LPRs in place for a pilot program by mid to late summer, and that we'd like to see, as we talked about, the cameras later on in the fall before the end of the year. But, you know, people are just, their, their behavior is aggressive, and it's reckless, and it's dangerous. So, but that would be for you folks to decide whether you think that's something we should do. And then finally, and I don't mean to take a lot of time, drone programs are the future of law enforcement. And the United States is behind when it comes to drones, or what things the rest of the world are doing, the large cities with drones is unbelievable. You'll see, and I bring that up because you'll see a request for drones in the air. So we, most police departments, certainly the most modern, medium-to-larger-sized police departments have, have drones, they have a drone unit. We had one, we have two, one of them is broken and no longer operational. But here's where I see drones. Now, you probably noticed at the Oyster Festival, we had a drone up in the air on a kind of static, just watching what was going on so we could see everywhere. The beaches, when we talked about, we couldn't see what was going on at the beaches because there'd be, we had hundreds and hundreds of people at beaches, at the beaches fighting, we'd be here, there'd be problems going on down here. So what we've learned to do is put a drone in the air. And so we think that it's important that, just like we have KAN officers, that we have a drone unit that is always working, that can put that drone in the air when there's a problem down in the beaches or in Milford Center. But here's what else they can do. It is almost like a mini aviation unit. For those that remember when we had the For those that remember when we had the, the man that had threatened, the Secret Service agent, or maybe it was Treasury agent with a, with a handgun, that disappeared into Eisenhower Park and we had to evacuate Eisenhower Park. And he was in Eisenhower Park, Eisenhower Park hiding, calling us on the phone saying, "I can see you and I'm going to shoot the first police officer that comes above us." We had, so we had a call for, we had to wait three and a half hours for a helicopter to show up from Long Island. The drone technology now comes with multiple camera systems. You can see at night, we can see heat signatures, we don't necessarily have to worry about a canopy of foliage. So it's great for searching. It's also great for looking for, you know, those on a silver alert, so someone that's wandered away from their neighborhood, a child, somebody that's, you know, an elderly person that maybe is, you know, has dementia or, or something similar. And so they allow us to search, they allow us to search on the water. Now, we're not there yet, but this is where we're going. So when we have something, like we know we're always getting overturned boats or kayaks or canoes, or somebody saw something on the water and we've got either police or fire, whoever's closest runs down, gets on that boat, charges it up and goes out there. Now we're going, we're going to send a drone. And so when the drone goes over there, the drone will actually, the one that we're buying, will be able to carry flotation device to somebody that may be in the water. Here's also why it's important, you can do speed enforcement with them. When we enter houses, we shouldn't, we should never again have to enter a building or a house where somebody's holed up with a weapon that's threatening to do us harm or somebody that we're looking for. We don't know where they are, but they know where we are. Years ago, we started putting robots in, but people got smart and they barricaded the robot. Now what departments are doing is they're sending in small drones, drones that can be just thrown right up and can navigate in small spaces and bounce off walls. That's about safety, safety, it, it's less likely we'll have to use force, we're safer, people now, house suspects are safer. So there's a lot of things I think that, that we can certainly do. And one of the, and I will even go one step further, law enforcement can get a license to pilot a drone where it's not line of sight. I think you're going to see drones as first responders. In fact, I know you are, you see it in different places of the, of the world. And there's two departments I know of, in fact, if you go on YouTube and you look at, there's a department that had a call and didn't have any police officers and they sent a drone out, not line of sight, it went there, hovered above and the, the call was that somebody had a handgun, was threatening people. And as the police officers are pulling up, he had a cell phone and the drone said, "No, it's not a weapon, it's a cell phone." You can Google that and see that on YouTube. So I think those are the three areas that we really need to look to in terms of technology. We've already made great strides with the drone, we've already developed, paid with Zs Asset money for the software to allow us to send those video links right down into the same system that we have our in-car cameras and our body cameras. So, sorry about the long answer.
Alderman Archio. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the chief. Hi, chief. I, I do have a follow-up question. You answered some of the questions I had about the drones line item. So the difference between what your department requested and the Board of Finance and the mayor recommendations is about $20,000. I was wondering what that dollar amount represents in a sacrifice to that area of focus for you guys?
It doesn't, and I appreciate the question. So it funds the replacement for the large drone, the drone with the multiple camera systems and one that can operate in challenging weather. And the other part of that was for a smaller drone that we would use for our SRT that would, when we had to go into a building. We paid for, we bought that through Zs Asset, so that's coming. And so we agreed that if we didn't fund it here, we would find other funding and, and we're able to get, so we're getting both of those.
So it doesn't represent a sacrifice?
No.
Excellent. And then I did have a question. I don't know if this would be directed to Captain Del Monte, but I saw him give an excellent presentation to the Board of Education about the SRO program. And I was wondering if I could get a little bit more information about how that department has grown over maybe the last five years. I know that there are unique behavioral challenges with kids nationwide. I know Milford isn't immune to that and I was just wondering a little bit more about how that program developed and what you guys would foresee in the future for that.
Sure. So if you recall, or you may or may not recall, we started off small, but we developed a program that the goal was to, to prevent a traditional law enforcement response. And so, you know, I know that there's controversy about SROs in, in some communities and, and I, I remember testifying at the legislature when they talked about this bill that they wanted to put in there and, and I said, I'll say the same thing now, for those communities that aren't happy with their SRO program, they should get rid of it, but Milford is very happy. And we, I think, work really well, I know we work really well with, we'll, first of all, we have a sound agreement, a sound MLU, work really well with our school system and, you know, we've been through multiple superintendents and they've all seemed to support it. We've expanded it. If you recall, I think it was three or four years ago where Mayor Blake added someone else. So we've expanded the unit. I think it's where it should be. I don't, while I can see the benefit in some of the smaller school systems, I don't think it's, it's a, that, we're spending a lot of money to train and pay for police officers and we look at where the, the, you know, the interventions are needed, it seems to be a better fit in the school. Now, if we are needed to, and, you know, to go into an elementary school to provide some sort of resource, we will, but we find that that's really not necessary. So we think we're in a really good place that makes sense. I think it's affordable with the agreement we have with Board of Ed. And if you'd like, I can ask Captain Del Monte if you'd like to add anything. He was an SRO, so he's more of an expert. Garrett, did you have anything you wanted to offer on that or?
I think you pretty much summed it up. I'll project because I noticed this is unplugged down here and I'm not going to try and plug it in. So in 2013, I became an SRO at West Shore in the academy, there were four of us originally. We became very busy because we started facilitating trusting relationships with all of our kids. It's grown now, we have five SROs, we have three substitute SROs. So our middle and high school buildings don't ever really go without coverage because we want to make sure that there's a steadfast presence there. They, and my segue with our social workers, segue a lot with our social workers so that we can get juvenile services both in school and in our communities so that they're successful back in the school building.
Thank you very much. And I did have one more follow-up question, if, if that's okay. It's just sort of a little bit minutia, but I noticed, oh, I lost my page. I noticed a $35,000 reduction in fuel and other propellants. I didn't know if that was just reflective of the line item where for police cruisers that was reduced by $100,000. Is it simply there are going to be fewer, like, fewer vehicles that need fuel?
No, that was a result of, so we don't have the per gallon amount. And so we rely on the city to give us that, that estimation of what that's going to be. We also know that there's an energy reserve. Peter, I believe there's still an energy, energy reserve, correct? And so that's more of a placeholder when we put that in, we, you know, all we have is what is we see on the market and then when we sit down at our budget meeting, that's when I usually ask, you know, what do we want to use for a price? And so that, that's, that number, we reconcile it at that meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Beatty. Chairman Vitra to the chief. When you mentioned, thank you for, this is a good example of a presentation of a budget that ties to the strategic plan and helps us to know what's coming down the pike in '24, '25 and '26. So thank you for that. Now, in the three areas of technology which you've introduced over the years, the one, the cameras, they can't, we want any technology in the expenditure to help the police, not put them at risk for being criticized. So some of the cameras, and you mentioned it, they're not going to be put in areas where it can be accused of being discriminatory because it's a thoughtful, and, and so that's good to hear and good for, for you, so nobody can criticize. What about the drones though? Can the same be said for drones? And before you answer that, when you, I know you're working on the, the ordinance, when the ordinance comes before us, one of the things that I would like to see for the speed enforcement and those tickets, other towns have done them, DC, they have an, they have an initial effect or they have a long-term effect to change your behavior and would the money be, maybe a link to the data? So would the money be spent better elsewhere or is that the way to go, the, the speed? But anyway, back to the drones.
Sure. So the drones won't be used for surveillance and that's the, so there's a couple of things right now I think the legislature's battling with and there's some, you know, folks that are criticizing the use of drones. And that is for surveillance and, and that we, that's not, we don't intend to do that. We intend to use those for, if you go to Yale Bowl at the Yale Harvard game, you're going to see a drone on a static display watching. It, it allows us to see what we can see with the naked eye. There are privacy concerns and there'll be fourth amendment concerns regarding, you know, looking into people's yards and things like that. So they'll be used just any way of, the same way a video cam would be used, to enhance what we could already see. And, and that enhancement would, would be telescopic, that enhancement would be infrared for at night or things for heat signatures. But they would only be used for events and for qualifying events. And then, I'm sorry, let me, if I could, there was also a concern about where you, what are you doing with their recordings? And those recordings would be held the same way, public recording of any body cam or dash cam.
Thank you. And lastly, to piggyback on, on the previous Alder's comment about the SROs, the best way to protect that program, I haven't heard any criticism about it at all, I'm the one who asks a question every single year, you and I have talked that length. The best way to protect that program is to do some data analysis and evaluate it, other than the anecdotal, we love it, and numbers. And then in a time of retrenchment, which may come down the road, it's half a million dollars across the city, not from your budget but from both, that we would be able to say to anybody who criticized that budget thing in five years, well, this is what it happens. So a real programmatic assessment is, is due, I think. And I said the same thing to the, the Board of Ed Education, I mean to the.
Sure. Understood. And we have that data, we, we track a lot and we'd be happy to provide that for you offline or appear in front of you and talk about it here. Thank you.
Alderman Bevan. Thank you, through you to the chief. As I look over the salaries of the officers and patrolmen, I notice that the rate of increase is about 2.5% due to the last contract that came up. I don't really have a question on the contract, I have more or less of a statement. And that statement is, if we are only giving increases up to 2.5% to where the cost of living goes anywheres from 3% to 5%, you are automatically behind where you should be. So I know I've been told by my people, a couple of people on the, on the Democrat side, that a statement like this could be political death to me, asking for more money for the police department. But you were the first department to come before us that actually have union contracts. And I would appreciate it if with your negotiations with your other side, we'll say, try to get more money as the percent of increase for a minimum of what the standard of living has gone up, just to break even. And this way, if you wanted to add more on top of that, that would be an actual raise. The 2.5% is not a raise. It's, in my opinion, it's a slap in the face to your department. Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a fast question, chief. The $40,000 that's allocated within the budget for drones, how many will that buy?
One.
One?
This is a, not the kind of drone you can buy at Best Buy. It's a commercial type of drone that can fly in challenging environments with multiple cameras and different, and, and carry a small payload. So it does a couple of different things. And also, the other piece that I failed to mention is we're focusing on buying American-made drones based upon some, a proposal, legislative proposal to ban certain drones. And, and so we've thought about that three years ago when we started hearing the federal government talking about that. So those, fortunately, those drones, those drones tend to be a little bit more. Thank you.
Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to Chief Mello. First of all, thank you for everything you and your department do for the city. I love this program with the social workers. I think it's great and I'm glad to hear it's, it's working out well for you, for you guys. My past experience with your team has been mostly when I was on Board of Education, dealing with the SROs, and I think that's a great program as well. Couple of questions on the budget. So you're adding one police officer, is that correct?
Yes. If I could give you some background on that.
Sure.
So we had talked about, for those that have been here, recall, three years ago, or, yeah, three years ago, two years ago, excuse me, we talked about adding four. And I had articulated the reason why and, and we, we pushed it to, to last year. And last year, there was an agreement to add the four. And I reached an agreement with Mayor Blake to hire two then. And then, so this year is the third and next year will be the fourth. And, and I met with Mayor Gennettasio and he had agreed to include, or to, to agree, he agreed to the original commitment I had made with Mayor Blake. If I'm, if I'm saying that correctly.
Which is one this year and then a, and then the fourth, third one this year and fourth one next year?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just want to ask for my understanding, under your overtime line, the budget last year was, or the current year's budget is $750,000 and next year is 850? So it's going up 100,000 in overtime? So I'm wondering what's driving that and I'm wondering if you have enough officers?
Sure. So when we look at the 22, 20, 22, 23 expenses, we see that we spent $953,000.
Yep.
And so I look at that, that 850 is the, so when you look at the 983, I take the 983, excuse me, the 753 that we've spent historically, which is very low for a department our size, very low. And I add the 2.5% to that and I come up with that number and so my request is 983. And we're pretty consistent year after year. In fact, this is one of the best years we've had for overtime, fortunately. We usually run out of overtime money in January and there's been some years we've run out in December. Fortunately, we've had overages in regular wages due to, due to some openings and we're able to transfer into that. So that's what that number reflects. I, I do think, and so that 850 is a number that was agreed upon in the mayor's meeting and the Board of Finance meeting.
Okay. So the 750 for the current budget year is just, we're, we're getting lucky that we're going to hit that 750 or is it too low?
We're going to go past that.
We're going to pass.
About 200,000 past that, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then that makes, that makes sense. And what's the line for overtime park that says 75,000, but there's no actual spending against it?
Right. So that is our beaches.
Okay.
And so we know that we've had a number of challenges with our beaches and we've had to put a lot of resources down there. So that, that account is used to, to put police officers at the beaches when we need them. We don't just put them down there, right? We've had a pretty good year last year, you know, relatively speaking, and we're hoping we'll win again this year. Memorial Day's coming, but actually it's not Memorial Day, we really don't have a problem, it's leading up to the end of school. So that money is to, when we have to put people at Gulf Beach and, excuse me, primarily Walnut Beach, that count pays for that. It's also used to perform checks of the other parks as well. Eisenhower, Gulf Beach, even if we don't have somebody down there, we need to make sure we play, pay close attention to those beaches. But, I mean, we had last year, we had, we had, you know, between local and state police, we had 37 police officers down there and we still didn't have enough people, if you recall.
Yeah.
And so we want to make sure, I'll give you a, for instance, the other night with the shooting in West Haven that started in Stratford and our people went on a mutual aid to help them and they said they were going to Walnut Beach. So we put everybody at Walnut Beach and we closed the beach. And when they came by and realized, they left. We, that's unusual because we're not geared up for the beaches yet, but we want to make sure if we start to see our beaches, you know, overly occupied or aggressive unruly behavior, or we have intelligence that suggests that, because we usually know because they, they use social media. media, and we're on it as well. So that's what that's for.
Okay. Thank you. It makes perfect sense. Just for some reason, the actuals so far are only $500 this year and $82 the year before, so maybe it's reported in another line, but it certainly sounds like something that you need and should have.
Sure. So I can, what happens on that is when the overtime comes in, sometimes, most of the time, it's taken out of the regular wage account, and then it needs to be reclassified to that account.
Okay.
And so you'll start to see a separate pull from that. And we will gear up for the last two months of the fiscal.
Okay. Last question. On the cruisers, you said, so I have two numbers here. I have a department request of 390,000, and then the mayor and finance board recommended 290. So is the 290 the eight cars?
Yes, the 290 is the eight cars without the changeover.
Okay.
Because there's other costs involved, so.
Okay. So what was the 100 reduction for?
I apologize, let me correct that. That is seven cars, not eight.
Seven cars?
My apologies. I can't read my own writing here.
So the request for the 390 would have been?
Eight cars.
Eight cars?
Eight cars plus the changeover. Plus the, when I say changeover, I'm talking about making that car a detective car, not adding things into the new cars, but changing it to a detective car because there's some work that has to be done by an outside vendor. That would have reflected eight cars plus changeovers. The 290 reflects seven cars without any, the changeover.
And what's the implication of not having that changeover? Or are you funding that somewhere else?
Well, look towards the private duty car account. So when we, when you see these construction jobs, if you see a cruiser, that cruiser's being rented, being paid for by the vendor, we use that money to pay the majority of the changeover, of the, either the changeovers or to buy that $30,000 worth of equipment. In fact, we'll spend approximately $150,000, if not more, a year from that account. And so that's what we use that for. And so, but we're very slim in our margins on those accounts. Those accounts have, we've really, I think, I think overuse those accounts, so we've got to be really careful.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Healy.
Thank you. Through the chair to Chief Mello. I'm looking at the staffing level. And you just mentioned one more this year, another patrol officer next year. Are there any other openings within the department?
We have, we just graduated a class in December, a large class. We had 10 people, we've added three really strong laterals or comparative certs, and now we have five in the academy now. When they graduate, and they'll graduate mid-June, they'll spend three months on FTO. So in September, if nothing changes, we'll be at full staff. But we know that's not going to happen. We know we're going to have, on or about July, three more vacancies, more than likely five vacancies. But that's pretty good from where we were.
Okay. Any other classifications besides law enforcement where you have vacancies within the department?
We have a, we just realized a dispatcher vacancy, we're hoping to hire within 60 days to fill that vacancy. We try to fill our vacancies as soon as we can, and because we have our academy, when we have a cluster of openings, we can put a class right through, as opposed to waiting for a post to, you know, give us three, a session.
The vast majority of your employees are all collective bargaining, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
They're all collective bargaining, the vast majority of your agency's employees?
The vast majority, with the exception of, and sworn, just sworn for the most part, although there are several other unions. Myself and the deputy chief are not in the union, but every other sworn person is in the union.
Okay. When we look at, again, overtime, can you explain your particular management of the overtime within the agency? Who has authorization within the command structure to authorize overtime?
Sure. So there's a number of different overtime accounts, but let's just focus on regular overtime. So regular overtime is for, and let's start with the easy one, investigations that require officers to stay past their, the end of their shift, or to come in to investigate something, like if we have, we need a special skill to come in, special events. But the majority of the overtime, and by special events, I'm talking about, it could be storms, it could be parades, it could be a number of different things. The majority of the overtime funds openings, vacation. By contract, we have to hire back 60%. In fact, we just went through the figures with the union today. We have to hire 60% of all vacancies.
You're talking about minimum patrol coverage?
We're talking about minimum patrol coverage, right? So we have to be at 60%.
What is minimum patrol coverage?
Well, it differs. There is no minimum number, and we're careful not to give a minimum number because it's cyclical. And we have seasons here, and we know that on weekends, on holidays, during the summer, I tell the new recruits, summertime in Milford is a very different department than it is in January. And so what is needed in the summer, needed on the weekend, is far different than what is needed, you know, during the non-peak times. But we focus on the contract that allows a certain number of people to be off vacation, that allows a certain number of people to be off accumulated time. People can call in sick whenever they want, as long as they say they're sick. But we also have training requirements, and so we try to, we only, when you look at dedicated training overtime, we only pay for 40% of an officer's training. The other 60% is done on duty. So we know we're going to have X amount of openings. We also have IODs, and you know, we have officers that have been out for quite a bit of time. We have military leave. And so we look at all those vacancies, and we know that we have to hire back for 60%. Now, that is the floor. Sometimes we need to be at 100%, and then we need to hold people over and order people in because we can't get enough people to work. So the majority of overtime comes from hiring back police officers at time and a half to work those openings, to work those vacations, to come in when we have, to make our 60%, or when we hold you over, or we call you back. The other part of that overtime is holiday pay. When you work, you get, you'll see holiday pay in here. In fact, you see holiday pay is about 200,000 underfunded every year, but we know we tend to have that surplus somewhere else. So it works. Eight hours of holiday pay is paid out of holiday pay. If you work that and you get paid at time and a half, the other four hours comes out of overtime. So there's other, there's a lot that dips into pulling that overtime, but most of it's contractual, and most of it is based upon the needs of the agency. The needs of the agency are determined by the season approach, and the chief commander's responsible to tell you, you can stay, or you can't stay, or you have to stay. Major crimes, sometimes the whole detective bureau has to work. And it changes based upon how many vacancies we have. And I think we're in a pretty good place right now because we have, we're almost at full staff. How many police departments with the attrition rates we've seen since post-2020 are at full staff? So we're pretty close.
Yeah, the reason I mentioned that account, obviously, it's significant in terms of what that means to the budget. This is a budget hearing, and I'm, you know, asking the question and looking for you as the chief executive of the department, along with the only other person that's not in the union, which would be the deputy chief, to be the best stewards in terms of guarding the expense relative to overtime and making sure that any expenditure for overtime is done in a prudent and efficient way in the best interest of the community. And I'm sure that's what you do, and that's the point in terms of asking, you know, the question. So that, you know, there are obligations relative to, you know, minimum standards that are within the contract and coverage for the municipality of this size, but yeah, it's just a matter of-
So let me just maybe help you with this. First of all, the question of trusting my people, I trust them, whether they're in the union or they're not, we provide very close oversight. I think if you talk to anyone that works for me, has worked for me, will tell you that I do, probably with some colorful words. But we also have a system, called Telstaff, if you've heard of it, it's a scheduling system. And most of that stuff is automated now. The system will go in and will look at how many vacancies we have each day. In fact, if I want to, if an officer wants to take a day off, the system will tell him, him or her, okay, you have this in the bank, so you're eligible, but your seniority doesn't allow you to. Or the parameters have been changed, therefore you can't take off. And then it will go and hire someone back for you. So a lot of it's automated, and so there are some, you know, there's a number of checks and balances, myself and a deputy chief included. We take very seriously money that is not ours, that belongs to the people. But one of the things I like to do as well is compare and contrast my budget with communities of similar size and complexity. We know we handle 60,000 events a year, calls for service. In fact, in the last four days, we handled 627 calls. I can tell you how many calls we had, I can tell you what type, I can tell you how long they spent on them, how long it takes to do a report. So we drill down pretty far to make sure that people aren't abusing their time. Frankly, they don't want to stay. That's why we have some money left in the budget. They don't want to work weekends and holidays anymore. It's a problem that law enforcement's having. But, so what I'll do is I'll look at departments that have similar population, similar complexities in agencies, and I'll look at how much do they spend? And I think if you did that, and you can do that online yourselves, you'll see that Milford runs a really tight ship when it comes to overtime. In fact, when you, I think if you want to just Google, "ties paid" in some of these communities, I share it with the city attorney all the time. You know, you're not seeing people making $300,000, you know, in Milford. Plus, I don't know how they do it because you're, we don't, I don't know how that's even possible. But we keep a really close watch on how much overtime that we spend. In fact, we give money back every year. I've been a chief for a long time, never come and ask for more money. Thank you.
Very good. One other question while I have you. On the software and maintenance account, could you explain that? It's a good number, it's over 400,000.
So if you look, and I don't know if you have this, but it provides a breakdown of every, they're all fixed costs, and those costs go up. And I'll just give you a brief overview of what's in there. Just bear with me one second. I missed the old book. Does anyone miss the old book? All right. So while I'm looking for, so what's in there is you're talking about OSI, which has CAD, RMS, Records Management System, and the JMS, the Jail Management System. I think that's about $190,000. Those maintenance costs continue to go up. I think there's probably, Axon's probably in there, and, here it is, excuse me. All right. So when we look at that, here's what we're talking about. And I appreciate the question because there is one new item in there, and that's ClearView for $8,600. And that's a facial recognition software that we've been borrowing from other communities to solve some crimes, or to help us solve crimes, I should say. So, and I'll just give you some of the larger amounts. Central Square, $184,000. $17,000 for Vertra simulator maintenance. $16,000 for watch guard cameras. Power DMS, software maintenance for our policy program and training program, $9,200. And then you can, I record, so you can go down the line here and see what those are, where those costs are coming from. And again, many of those costs are, almost all those costs are fixed costs. And there's $8,000, in the end, it's 402,000. There's $8,000 that's built in for costs that were, that we couldn't bargain, excuse me, couldn't budget for, and costs that may come up that are unexpected. So the total of the maintenance contracts for all these systems, everything from I record system that records all of our interview rooms and so on and so forth, all traffic solutions, $9,000 for those signs that you see, those traffic signs that we put up that everybody wants, the radar signs, we have to pay a maintenance fee on those in addition to those. So that's $9,000. That comes to 402, and again, $8,000 for costs that were unexpected.
Thank you, chief. And my last question, any opportunities that you see with federal grant money for any enhancements, your drone program or surveillance equipment, that type of thing?
No. You know, we've had a lot of success with grants. In fact, that's how we started our body cam program, first ones in the, second one in the state to start the body cam program. When others were just talking about it, we were doing it, we had a federal grant for that. Our MDTs in the cars, they were a result of federal grants. There are COPS grants out there and community-oriented policing services. Most of those grants, as we see, are going towards larger, more challenged communities, and there's specifics in there. We have, every year, we usually get one or two formula grants. Competitive grants are getting more difficult, but formula grants that come down for either state or federal, for things such as our vests, that's a federal program, we get 50% of our money reimbursed for vests, we get money for distracted driving, we just had some state money that was given to us to do car theft, to be part of a car theft task force. But we watch those, we certainly look for all funding opportunities, we've had success in the past. My advice would be to talk to your legislative, our legislative delegation. I know that we did lobby James Maroney to get some tuition reimbursement for police officers. He was great, did a great job with that. But that's where it needs to start. Right now, we're looking for, we're lobbying, and there's a legislative proposal for state grant funding for devices that we can put on the front of cruisers that can fire a GPS that sticks to your car, because people are running from us every day, certainly every weekend. They just don't stop. And this will help locate them. And there are some funding proposals, I don't even know if it's still, if it's in committee or if it's going anywhere, to help municipalities that bought foreign-made drones, because the legislation wants, is to get rid of those. And, you know, right now, they're working on what the date's going to be, but that'll likely pass next year or this year. We don't have that problem. We're not going to have to worry about that. But, yeah, no, we do. We think we're pretty aggressive, as aggressive as we can be. But, you know, there's a lot that goes into funding a police department like this that's not even reflected in this budget. You know, there are other areas, other things we do to fund our operation. For instance, our training academy, it makes money. The only reason that building at Simon Lake is standing and has, is because of the money we made by charging other communities. So we look for other opportunities to always make money to offset the costs for the taxpayers. But thank you.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate your answers and having started my law enforcement career on the Milford Police Department. And I salute you and all the men and women of the department, and we appreciate everything you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the questions.
Any more questions for the chief? Alderman Beatty. Wow, you're popular tonight.
Epperson Beatty, to the chief, two things. The asset funding. Now, you said, I want to be clear whether it's, the fund was low because of pandemic, fewer jobs, and the vendors weren't paying into it. That was my understanding from other years. And you just said we've been overly reliant on it or depleted. It's not because you depleted it much, there was a few, a less amount of money in it for those reasons. Is that true?
Alderman Beatty, I think it's both. And so while we didn't see money going in for 2020, there's a lot of programs that, you know, and things we need to pay for. And so if you, you know, as you all know, there was the, and actually, I think Alderman Smith may remember this, the, there was a Barney arbitration ruling that provided a certain percentage to be tacked on to the private duty to offset the costs of police officers working private duty. Taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for uniforms or training, radios, all those things, right, for that, whatever that percentage of time is that they're working. And so that money, for instance, when we look at uniforms, uniforms and equipment, that money really hasn't gone up. We spend more than double that money. Radios, portable radios, when those things, we have to replace those, say, at 10 a year. You don't see that in here. That comes out of private duty. A lot of the equipment, for instance, I'm not even sure if you're aware of this, but we had a weapon system, nine millimeters that were breaking and failing- we had a weapon system, nine millimeters that were breaking and failing, three, four years ago, we had to replace those. We spent $100,000 replacing those. That came out of one of these accounts, actually, that came out of Seize Assets. And now we have this new system that if you, not to spend a lot of time on Google, but you can see that Six Hour is having these, these accidental discharges. They have one in Orange, they have one in Ledger, they've had them all over the country, there's been lawsuits as a result of it, nobody's prevailed. The last one was so close that we have to now get rid of those weapons that are like brand new, and we're buying a whole number set of weapons. So when you have to buy those weapons, you've got to buy holster systems for those, that's over $100,000. You've never seen any of that in here. The motorcycles that we have, you've never seen a motorcycle in here. Those are all paid for. A lot of the specialty equipment that we buy, we buy through those accounts.
Right.
And those are public accounts that, you know, that I work with through finance and whatnot. So we have spent a lot of that money because we've had to replace a lot of equipment.
So that's why I asked the question with the budgetary hat on for the future, is there more of that assets in percentage, or is there anything the Board of Alders can do? Because that money is augmenting what's not in the budget for equipment supplies.
Sure, sure. I mean, it's being spent what it's been designed to be spent for, but it also, I think, provides a lot of relief to taxpayers. Our Seize Asset Fund, that's, you know, we're still in good shape, but we're not getting those deposits anymore. We don't have anybody in the DEA Task Force anymore because we were short, you know, we were short personnel, so we pulled our Task Force people. When you're not involved with that, you're not getting, you're not seeing those funds come in. And so we're spending more than we're taking in.
Okay. And lastly, but this is, you know, it's not a budget in time just this year, 24, 25, it's supporting the police over a long period of time, and I'm trying to hook into other things you told us. Alderman Bevin's comment was apt and benevolent, and we've all learned about how hard it is to keep fire police, et cetera, and other department heads because of wage competition with other towns. But we have to stay out of that. If it's a negotiated position, we really have to stay clear and not put our finger on the scale, even if there's a delay, which there was recently in one big contract in the city. We didn't say a peep, we waited, because it's between the people who negotiate and the administration. So the lack of commentary doesn't mean lack of support for that salary or what you want.
Sure, understood. Thank you.
Any more questions for the police department? Seeing none. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for answering all our questions. And thank you for keeping the city of Milford safe.
Thank you.
The next department on our agenda is the Animal Control. ACO Scott Ellington, Ellingson, page 59.
Good evening. My name is Scott Ellingson, I'm the ACO for Milford and Orange. Basically, I'm keeping the budget the same, but I do have some increases. Secretarial fees I need to increase to 2,400 due to the new rules for recording secretaries that were implemented. Electricity, I do need to move up to 9,000 because we are going to have climate control in the kennels. The state has mandated that it has to be kept between 55 and 80 degrees. Heating fuel, I am asking for $1,000 more because everything is going up.
Any questions for the Animal Control Department? I don't see any, Scott.
All right. Thank you.
You got off easy tonight.
Yep.
Have a good night. The next department on our budget hearing schedule is Bridges Community Healthcare, We have CEO Jennifer Fiorello.
We do not. My apologies, you do not.
No problem. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Allison Chanka, I am the Director of Fund Development and Communications for Bridges Healthcare. And Carlos Rodriguez, our CFO, is handing out some handouts to you. Jen Fiorello, since her apology, she had an out-of-town trip scheduled far before this meeting was, and so you have us this evening. It's nice to see some familiar faces here, and those who are not familiar, I look forward to meeting you in the future. Carlos finished handing those out. So we are here on behalf of Bridges Healthcare. As you know, Bridges is Milford's local mental health authority, and also a certified community behavioral health clinic. We provide meaningful mental health and recovery services to children, families, and individuals here in Milford, and as well to West Haven, Orange, Stratford, and surrounding communities. We are really grateful for our history here in Milford, for our being founded in Milford and serving the residents here and partnering with the city. Since 1957, we've been working together to provide the children, families, and individuals with a strong support system with their varied behavioral health needs. We are especially grateful for this funding from the city, and to get to partner with Milford in so many ways through working with the Health Department, the school system, and the coordinated efforts through the Prevention Council. It takes a strong network of organized commitment to keep our community and individuals strong, and that feeling is definitely alive here in this city with a big heart. I cannot overstate how important this support is of your funding of $380,000. This is level funding that we are asking for. It is key in helping us keep our critical program state afloat. It goes a really long way in bridging the gap that's left for programs that are vulnerable to underfunding from other grants and reimbursements. For instance, our outpatient child programs are continually underfunded, leaving our most vulnerable clients, children, even more so. So, but with this funding through Milford, we are able to continue and provide these services despite funding deficits, when DCF and third-party reimbursement only covers less than two-thirds of that cost. And so this is where this funding comes in, and it's really key. And with other local funding sources like the United Way drying up, it's all the more important that we have this funding to rely on while we search for, to fill in with renewing other gifts from other funding sources. And I don't need to tell you all that there are, the cost of funding programs is rising between inflation and higher demand for pay and the cost of marketing opening positions. During this workforce shortage, we have a greater squeeze on our expenses, but despite that, we come to you asking for level funding. So the handouts that are in front of you, the first, the first handout is just our fiscal year '23 services that were provided through our entire catchment area. You'll see that in all individuals were reached, nearly 9,883, 8,883 individuals were reached through Bridges. You can see a breakdown there of what that means, either through the prevention efforts or through our direct services of families, adults, and children. We deliver more than 20 different programs and services, and our population is 70% classified as having low to very low income. So these are people who are needing our services, and often, we are the only ones who can provide it. The second page that you'll see that Jen kindly put together for you, this is a list of the services provided specifically here in Milford. So the first is all of our catchment area, and these are, these are numbers, service hours, and the people who receive these services. You can see there are a host of different programs here on the left column, from our adult substance use and medication management, those are our outpatient adult programs, recovery programs, our intensive outpatient program, which is a three-day-a-week, three-hours-a-day program. So that's when you'll see maybe smaller amounts of people served, but a large number of hours that go in behind all of those. A number of different social services, and then our child outpatient, as well as our intensive in-home therapy that treats children with higher acuity needs in their homes. So you can see that a great deal of effort goes into, and residents are benefited by the services that we're providing, and we're just so grateful that you help us do that. I will open it up for any questions, if you have any.
Anyone have any questions? Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, through you. I'm just curious, the far-right column here, service units, could you break that down?
Sure. So, so our units of time are not always in increments of hours, so sometimes services are by 15 minutes, like a med visit for prescription might not take as long as an hour, but those are different interactions between a provider and the client. And so even though that the hours, you might see that there's a much higher amount of units in that first line than the hours, it's because of maybe a smaller increment, but those are different visits or interactions.
Thank you.
Alderman Archiolo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hi. I just have a quick question. When we met with the Board of Educ, when we met with Dr. Katia's office, she had mentioned that you, Bridges was able to facilitate a grant that allowed us to hire three, was it therapists?
Yes.
And I had asked her the question, are there any potential opportunities to hire more therapists through that channel? I didn't know if there were other grant opportunities that you folks were actively looking at.
We are always looking at every grant that comes through. Actually, I skipped past that point in my notes mostly because, for time, but we might have recently seen, we have been acquiring a lot of grants from the federal and state levels. In fact, we just had the Deputy Assistant Secretary of SAMSA come visit us because we've been receiving and awarded a lot of grants, including the trauma-focused, school-based grant, which you're referring to. Within those grants, they are very specific into what we are providing, so we also got our CCBHC grant, which helped us expand over into West Haven, into Stratford, got our Wellness on Wheels WOW vehicle. If none of you have seen the WOW, please come by, I'm happy to give you a tour, it's very, very neat. It is literally a clinical office on wheels. We have the Matt Padua grant that helps fund our Matt van for the medical assistant treatment program. And so each of those are really great because they are filling out our, you know, our comprehensive full programs that we're providing residents. However, it doesn't help fill in these other vital and critical areas that need the funding. So it, in one, on one hand, it's great because Milford residents are getting enhanced services because we're seeking these grants, but at the same time, it takes a lot of work. I mean, our team works very hard, I think just the trauma focus maybe, I don't know if Carlos remembers that, I think the grant was about 92 pages for that one. But we have a great team who works hard to get that, and it was great because we were able to expand the number of clinicians in the schools, and yes, absolutely, we would love to continue. I'm sorry, that was a much longer answer than you were probably looking for.
Oh, that was excellent. I really appreciate the thoroughness. Thank you very much.
Yes, yeah.
Alderman Harlow.
Good evening. Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Total budget?
Eighteen.
Eighteen million dollars.
Eighteen million. So, so the rest of your funding is through grants, or do the other communities you service contribute as well?
We do. So a great proportion of our, and this is more Carlos, a great proportion of our budget comes from federal grants. We also get third-party reimbursement through insurances or Medicaid, Medicare, we take Husky. And then we do have some, some of our locations that we serve do provide. So we received about $100,000 in ARPA funding from West Haven, helped us get a new roof. We work with the City of Orange, provide some funding through, I'm going to let our CFO because this is what he handles.
Sure. Yeah, so the funding, mostly DMS, $7 million, that's about 42% of our total budget. And then, you know, as Allison mentioned, DCF, grossly underfunded, our outpatient, they only fund about a third of our outpatient program, but mostly, DMS is our highest fund there for our budget, about 42%. And we're bringing about $4 million on our per-service fees.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Alderman Federico?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the team from Bridges. First of all, thank you for what you do, thank you for presenting tonight, thank you for filling in. My question is maybe more directed through the chairman to Mr. Aradisi, I don't know. I'm wondering, the $380,000, how long has that been the grant? Does that get reviewed on a certain basis? Is there a cycle, or?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico. It is reviewed on an annual basis through the budget process. My recollection is that it has been relatively flat over many years. There might have been a modest increase in a certain year or two, but it is reviewed every year through the three phases of the budget process and in discussions with Bridges Administration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Bridges? I think we're all set. Thank you very much for your presentation and your answering our questions.
Thank you.
And all you do for the city of Milford, thanks a lot.
Thank you for all you do. And I do want to put one little plug in, our tickets went on sale today for our brand-new event that's called Rock the Dock for Mental Health. It's going to be on May 30th at Listman Landing, so check it out. Please join us, I'd love to see you all there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next department on our budget hearing schedule is Economic and Community Development on page 20. Julie Nash, Director. Good evening, Julie.
Good evening, Alderman. So my budget is flat. You will see two items here that were polled, one, my salary increase, and one, the request to upgrade my clerk to a full-time position. So those are not on my requests any longer, so my budget remains the same. We continue to do great work, I'm a one-woman show, and we have year-over-year growth in business development and business starts. I like to call our business starts numbers economic activity so that we continue to trend up. When I first started 10 years ago, we were in about the 300s, and now we are in the 700s. So we continue to grow businesses in the city, which of course helps the grand list. We work in all sorts of different departments here with the city, and I just want to make note, you know, when you're looking at the budget, to make sure that you understand the integration really of economic development and what that means for the city. integration really of economic development and what that means for the city. So when the police department, for instance, you know, is not a world-class police department or the crime is rising, the businesses and residents that want to look in the city of Milford and see those statistics and they think, well, we don't want to go here. So it's important that all the departments are treated fairly and equitably and making sure that they have the resources to succeed because if they don't have the resources to succeed, then economic development is, you know, we don't have the statistics that we're all able to tout on a yearly basis. This morning, Tony and I went to visit Schick and we had a really interesting conversation about workforce development. And I think people understand specifically manufacturing and what that means for the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut has really doubled down in manufacturing. The top three sectors in Milford are healthcare, retail, and manufacturing. So we're really benefiting from what the state of Connecticut is doing. And one of the issues that we have here in the state is making sure that we have the workforce to provide these companies that live and breathe and employ our residents in the city to keep growing. And evolution is important to a company like Schick. So they're really having difficulty with workforce development. And we talked a little bit about local level and how we can make a difference and what kinds of things other manufacturers in the state are doing. I brought up Electric Boat, which is an interesting case study. What they're doing now is creating a curriculum for third grade and up, third grade, to make sure that they're funneling folks into their facilities as they move through the education system in the New London County. I think when we look at the education budget here, specifically in Milford, that we have to remember that it's absolutely integrated into economic development, that the workforce development starts in education. And for us to support our businesses like a Schick and making sure that we have the workforce grown in this city, we have to support the education system. So when we're looking at a 1.8 million dollar cut or a 1.3 million dollar cut, we're talking about things that are much more significant than I think cutting a teacher leader. What we're looking at is making sure that the esports lab that I created with Affinity Esports with the support of Dr. Kataya lives and breathes because the jobs of today are not the jobs of tomorrow. And if we don't have the resources in our school system, these kids are leaving Connecticut. We need to support our school system to make sure that the workforce development is here. We need to get the third graders interested in manufacturing. Manufacturing isn't what it used to be, you know, when our parents were younger. And just quickly, raise your hands. How many of you are college graduates? So pretty much, except one, I think. One in four Americans are college graduates. We are lucky here in New England to have a concentrated, college-educated force, but what we need to understand is that manufacturing and the return on investment in colleges so different. And working with our school system to support them in robotics, emerging markets, the jobs that of tomorrow are the jobs, we don't even know what they are now. So we have to make sure that we're supporting those efforts in the school system. And I really come at economic development in a holistic manner. I look at it as live, work, learn, play. So is there, you know, our recreation department, we work a lot together too. They're working with these esports program now to make sure that that's also getting to our students. There's actually college scholarships for esports now. Things are just changing rapidly and we need to be here to support our students and make sure they're here. One of the biggest issues in Connecticut is our median age here in Milford is 47.4. That's old. We need to make sure that our young people stay. And if we're not supporting them and making sure that they're fun, we're funneling them into the programs that we need to fund and they need to get hired in and us supporting our businesses in town, then, you know, we're, we're not going to survive. So that was a very long beginning, but I just wanted to make sure that I got across that economic development is integrated in so many departments. And so when you're looking at this budget, look at it holistically and how it does affect what I do on a daily basis.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. What is your current trends, what do you see in the current trends in new businesses like over the past few years?
Yeah. So like I said, retail, healthcare and manufacturing are our top three sectors. They continue to be year-over-year our top three sectors. The issue, healthcare is doubling, manufacturing is doubling, retail, of course, it's a nationwide issue. We, we see that trending down. What they're doing now in a mall, for instance, right, they're having these mixed-use developments that have the live, work, play aspect, the offices, which also is a nationwide trend. And our biggest vacancies in the city of Milford is office because people just don't work the way they used to. So, you know, like a 470 Wheeler's Farm Road where they're knocking down the property and they're making that a live, work, play kind of situation. Those are the types of things that we're going to have to look at and change zoning to allow them to maximize our land and the taxpayers' dollars.
There like too much commercial space right now in Milford? Or I don't, I don't want to say, give you, ask a opinion. It's kind of a difficult question, but is like especially the north end of Milford, is too much commercial space and better utilized with more mixed-use space?
So, well, yes and no. There's too much office space. Commercial space, you know, we're seeing a trend of turnovers, but that's across the country. The way that retail used to operate cannot operate that way any longer because of the online sales. So we're at a pivotal moment to see how they kind of redefine themselves. And I think a lot of the redefinition of these parcels will be a live, work, play. And another issue we have in Connecticut is we're such an old state that so much of our office space is not Class A. So even though we have this vacant office space, we can't even put a prime headquarters in there because it's just too old. They would have to knock it down and completely rebuild it. So we really need to look at redeveloping everything and creating Class A workspace for these folks that come in here. I mean, there's a lot of pivotal issues that are coming our way. And up until 2027, we will have what they call a silver tsunami or a silver streak, which is we'll have more 65 and older folks retiring at any, more than at any time in history. So we, as a city, municipal employees, we're going to have to fight for it, right? And we're, we're the cream of the crop right now. If we don't look at 2027, 2028, 29 and making sure that we're competitive in the market, not only for municipalities, but we're competitive in the market for private sector, right? We used to in the municipality was, yeah, you knew that you would have less pay because we'd have these great benefits. But each year of this chipping away at the benefits, which is a, is a pay cut as well. The private sector is now competing with us where that really didn't happen. You had two different types of people. If we don't look at what's happening through 2027, when the silver tsunami hits and we're not funding all of these positions we need to fund and making sure that our people stay here and take the jobs that we're all going to leave, we're not going to survive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Julie.
Hi.
It seems that you have a multifaceted department.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, does one of those facets go to the attraction of people coming to the city?
Go to the attraction of?
Of people moving to our city?
Meaning, do I go out and ask them to come move to the city?
I don't know, do you?
Well, I can say benchmark-wise. So right now, the past year, what I've been doing is an economic development strategic plan post-COVID. And I wanted a five-year roadmap to kind of look at, benchmark us right now, see where we are, and then have a five-year plan to improve those numbers. We're less than 1% of residential increase over the past, since 2019, which is basically stagnant. Even though we had a thousand new employees come in, I'm sorry, a thousand new residents come in, it's really insignificant when you look at the total numbers. So when I look at residential attraction, it's kind of what I was talking about before, integrating all those departments. You know, is the police, I get calls all the time from businesses asking about crime stats. And, you know, Officer Luke, you know, he sent me crime stats recently to show the crime, total overall crime in Milford is down, but of course there's spiking in different areas. So recreation, do we have enough programming? The quality of life aspects, are the restaurants surviving? Those are all attractions, the DMBA. So one of the things is with downtown businesses, if you don't have a managed downtown business association, that's one of the first questions a lot of businesses will ask when they're looking at downtown because they want to know that somebody is responsible for mowing, having events, all of those things. So when we're putting those events on every week, which everyone knows in Milford, every weekend in the summer, there's something, that is attraction.
Thank you. As, as we found out, you know, the school system is reducing by maybe 100 kids per year. We're now at 5,200 kids. You know, years ago, we were up to, I think I brought this out the other night, we were up to 13,000 kids, 21 built elementary schools, three high schools. Population in Milford in the last couple of years has dropped 2,000 people, 2,000. So have you done a deep dive into maybe why is this happening? I mean, we're supposedly attracting people. Our school system is attracting people. Hello? It's gone down. City is attracting people. Hello? Last couple of years, 2,000, we've lost 2,000 people in population. So, you know, I know the trends are there. There are some trends. There are things you're working on and so what do you put your finger on as to why this is happening at this particular point in time?
We are an expensive state to live in. We need to make sure that, you know, we're offering competitive rates and competitive jobs and competitive markets. That's difficult when folks, you know, look in other areas that might have a lower cost of living. But when you really do the numbers, like a Florida, for instance, there are a lot of folks, you know, there's a, will kind of snowbird down there. The taxes, the flood insurance and all those things, but the quality of life that we offer here, the education that we offer here is so significantly better than so many of these communities that you don't maybe pay as many taxes in. So I think that, yes, we are losing people, but I think that in the next 10 to 20 years, we'll be gaining people if we do the right things. And doing those right things is in making sure that we're providing the opportunities for our children to have jobs to, to succeed here. If we do not do that, we'll have nothing. It's all, I mean, it sounds silly, but it lies with the children. It's our job to make sure that those children grow up in a place that they don't have to leave.
Right. It's an expensive place and people can't bring kids up at this point, but I don't know what's going to happen in the next 20 years. I probably won't be here, you know, to answer that question. But the fact remains that if it's expensive now, the next 20 years, it's going to be even more expensive.
Across the country, across the country.
And so, you know, it's, it's not the, I guess the answer is not to reduce and make it less expensive, is how do we get these people to come to Milford? But, you know, we're doing what we can and I thank you for your job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Ms. Nash. So you caught my attention when you said the median age, was that in Milford is 47.4?
That's correct.
So by comparison, what is it nationwide? Like what should I benchmark that against?
So nationwide, it would, and I will send you the specific data because I don't want to misquote, but it would be probably mid to high 30s.
Okay.
Connecticut itself is a very old state. We talk a lot about people need to start having more babies here in Connecticut, repopulate Connecticut. But, you know, we're in the right direction. I think that Connecticut had, like I said, we doubled down on manufacturing. We're the only state that has a chief manufacturing officer in the country, which is a big deal. Paul Lavoy, he's a great guy. He comes to Milford. We talk to businesses. So we're doing the right things to make sure we succeed and we're successful. But it's our job too on that local level to make sure that we're providing the support for our folks to grow and succeed here as well.
Okay. And so if, to work towards lowering that, like what are some of the key actions?
Literally having more babies.
You, you talked at the beginning about the funding education. Is that part of it as well? Does that attract younger people?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, I think most of us are parents and, you know, when we're looking to relocate or looking to, to educate our children, and I get these calls all the time. And people ask, oh, why, you know, I'm going to go to Orange, the school system is better in Orange, because they look at the data, right? But the data in Milford as opposed to Orange, it's just not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges because we have such a more diverse community. We are just as successful, if not more successful. And I don't want to take anything away from our neighbors in Orange because, you know, we clearly work together quite a bit. But we have an incredibly successful community. We're just a little bit more diverse than our neighbors in Orange and that skews the numbers a little bit. But yeah, I think that when we're looking to attract new young families that are bringing their children into the community, the first thing they're looking at is the numbers. One of the issues that we're coming up across too, when it comes to manufacturing and, and having those alternatives to college is, and Tony and I were talking about it earlier today, you know, one of the statistics that people look at in the school system is what, how many kids go to college from the high school in that community? And I believe ours is about 97.6%, which is high. But here we are touting kids and take a different, different route, become plumbers, get in the trades. There's opportunities for you in AI, where you can just get a certificate. You can go to coding. You don't have to be bogged down on these college degrees. If we keep touting this, those stats go down. So part of us educating the children is also educating the parents to understand that those statistics aren't necessarily the statistics that we should be using to tout our school system. I've seen some school systems, you know, when kids get college scholarships and they get soccer and they have a signing moment and everyone's there. Well, you know, some of the schools are now doing that when they get signed at Stratton Industries or Schick and, you know, throwing the hats on and giving those kids those moments too. And those are just as important. But we are so heavily manufacturer-related, we're so healthcare-related. What's kind of cool about our school system and actually a lot of departments in the city of Milford, we're really innovative with a lot of things we do. And a lot of communities are calling to ask how to replicate a lot of, a lot of the work that our departments do. One of the things that we do in our education system that they're trying to replicate in other school systems is we have career pathways. We're toward like many majors. We have computer science, entrepreneurship, global affairs, healthcare, and they're actually trying to start a manufacturing one as well. When they redid Platte, unfortunately, they did not have any more seats. And there's an 800-person waiting list at Platte, 800. There's 800 kids they turn away that want to go there and be in the trades and they can't. So our school system is looking to add a manufacturing pathway. Well, what does a manufacturing pathway need? Really expensive equipment. But how are we going to support the kids staying here? And again, I'm looking, I'm not looking two years, four years, five years down the road. I'm looking 25 years down the road when they're working age. We have to invest in those types of education programs now. We're already behind the eight ball at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Hi, Julie. How are you?
Hello.
You mentioned new young families are what we need here. A concern of mine, talked about it the other night with the school system is metrics. Test scores are down. That's not going to bring new families. We just listened to the chief talk about crime being up. That makes it difficult for new families. And as you said, taxes in this state are high. So those are three major concerns of most young families. And I think that those are things that we need to find a way to address if we're looking to bring those new families, younger families into Milford.
Absolutely. But I also think we need to do better at explaining what that means because crime, total crime in Milford is down. The, there's instances of crime that are up that the chief explained, but total crime is actually down. So we need to talk about that as well. If we focus on the negatives, that's what we're focusing on. So that's a good thing. Crime is down. Even though the perception is there that it's up, it's, it's not. The data just doesn't support it. So I think we need to screen that message very, very loud. The metrics when it comes to taxes, we need to talk about what you're getting for for taxes here. What you're getting for taxes in Milford is wildly different than what you get for taxes in Orange, and they pay more in taxes in Orange, and we get a hell of a lot more here in Milford. We need to screen that from the rooftops. We need people to understand what you're getting by living in Milford. And that's a collective, collaborated effort. We need to make sure that the perception of what we have here is out there, and that takes a lot of work. Takes a lot of work on the education side, it takes a lot of work with the chief and all the departments here. We don't have a marketing department, we don't have a communications department. It's all of us kind of trying to work our best to get that information out there. So, you know, when we look at this budget, I'm saying we need to increase it on a lot of levels. Marketing and communications would go a hell of a lot of way to tell people that these statistics that you're talking about are not accurate. When you see the numbers are down, they're not down, they're just more diverse. And I think we need to make sure that we're explaining what that means. Our special education system is much higher and much more, we have many more children than other school systems related to us. And I don't want to say remove those children because that's not an appropriate way to go about this, but if you look at, if you took the numbers out and you did an apples to apples, you're going to see wildly different numbers. And these are the things that we need to talk about.
Thank you. And I can appreciate the fact that in some instance, there is, there is a decrease in overall crime. Smaller crimes are up and are certainly getting the news.
Yes.
But perception is reality, and that's, that's the problem we're facing.
I agree.
Thanks.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Julie. I don't know if it's an anomaly, I don't know, and you've got a job in front of you, I'm sure. You said the median age in Milford was 45 and a half?
40%.
15% of our population is between 45 and 50, I guess 54 years old. And it's not an older community, it's, I would imagine, in the middle somewhere. But what astonishes me in income distribution, 46%, over 46% of our population makes $100,000 or more. And 23% of our people make over $200,000. 23% of our people make over $200,000. So when you have a community like that, how do you, how do you address that younger crowd who's just starting off, making, what, $70,000? Look at policemen, firemen, 7, 60, 40, teachers, 47, 48. It's a hell of a job in front of you to say, hey, we have a community that you could live in, but you can't afford it. Look at the TOD. I mean, they come in, they don't want a car, they don't want kids, they just want to live on High Street and behind Founder's House and take the train to New York to make their $200,000, I guess. Come on back, have no responsibilities other than, they're not even on a car probably, just walk to get food and groceries and whatever. It's a diverse, I mean, it's not even diverse, it's, it's a tough community to live in with those numbers that, you know, 46...
And also 34.3% of our community is low to moderate income as well. Part of my department, I have economic development and I have community development, and I manage a, over about $540,000 grant that we use to supplement some, you know, whether it be single-family home repairs or charitable things, we give grants out, about $540,000. So yeah, 34% of our community is also low to moderate income. So when you're thinking about the numbers and you're thinking about education numbers, remember that those numbers are there and they're not there in the other communities that we're talking about. So specifically to your question about how are we going to attract younger folks because things are not affordable? Well, we worked on an affordable housing plan, and we need to make sure that the housing we hear is available to those folks, right? So one of the things we had talked about with our previous mayor is creating some opportunities with developers that come in. This is something we're just talking about, potential proposals, nothing's on the table yet, but specifically doing priority lists. So a developer comes in and says, hey, we're going to bring in 500 new apartments. And we say, okay, well, can we do 45% of those affordable? And we'll have a priority list. So first priority is Milford businesses. They have to work in Milford businesses to live there. Second priority, and I'm just making this up as I go, second priority is our police and fire department to make sure, and our educators, to make sure that they have places to go that are affordable. So creating this cyclical housing opportunity, these are things we need to implement. These are things that other communities have implemented that we can easily do. But, you know, it takes the bandwidth, it takes gumption, it takes political will to do these things. And affordable housing isn't very attractive in the city of Milford. Not everybody, you know, wants that next door for whatever reason. So finding the appropriate places to do this is important, but all of these things can be done. We just have to do it. You know, it's there, we can absolutely do it, but if you want to help me, let's do it.
I want to help you, thank you.
Any more questions for community development?
Chairman Vitro. I was wondering why you didn't put line items in the budget, such for our marketing and communications and help us to envision what you see as need. And thank you for that presentation. And before you answer that, I have one thought. Whenever we talk about the businesses, the small business, 300 to 400, now it's 700, we don't hear the awareness of that creates a demand for services. Willis Farms Road, whatever, on the fire police, public safety, education, hopefully education will create a demand. But, and so in your presentation, you mentioned almost everything, the mall, death of retail, car-centric, moving away, except that piece, that as you have new businesses and bring in people, you have a demand. But anyway, and then...
A demand on municipal services?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then back to, which affects budget and what our role is, but then back to, why don't you have a line item and give us a more of an ask? It's just the salary and, because otherwise we can't imagine what you need unless you...
Yes. Well, you know, there doesn't seem to be the ability to fund those types of things at this time, so.
I know that, but the ask helps to think of what your strategic plan is in five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Alderman Hailey.
A pleasure to meet you for the first time.
Same.
And just a comment, I know that planning and zoning is currently taking initiative and they're looking, you know, to create that, you know, housing corridor that you spoke of. And you mentioned education before, and it is critical, we're considering that currently. One of the things, and as Alderman Beatty said about, you know, budget and marketing, would be perhaps to partner with Dr. Kataya, members of first staff, get students involved, and create, in the real estate business, it's location, location, location. So to create a marketing video that's on a website that really highlights the significance of some of the services that are here in Milford. A certified, top-notch police department with the credentials, the certified, top-notch, nationally-recognized fire department with paramedic service on every shift that there is. Then our green is second to none, you know, here, you know, in Connecticut. And that, you know, when we talk about the use of drones and a quick marketing, you know, sales pitch and so on, I would certainly be in favor of helping you to fund, you know, that through an allocation, get students involved and build something that's dramatic and demonstrative for people who are, you know, new to the area to come in and see. Because they are discriminating, you know, discerning, you know, people who are trying to find the right place for whom? For themselves and to raise their children. And a lot of us here haven't left because of, you know, the good place that this is, and we've all been beneficiaries of this community and what we get out of it. So I think that some of us, you know, here would certainly support you in that type of an endeavor with some additional funding for that.
We actually have created education videos, live, work, play videos. We have them, they live on our website and they live on the education department. I'm happy to send those to you. Perhaps we need to just get those going out again. I used to do the marketing and communications for the city with the website and the social and all of those things, but when Justin came on, he took that over. So it's not in my department any longer. I just do a newsletter related to economic development and all the other marketing and, and things of that nature reside with the chief of staff.
Any more questions for the economic development? I don't see any. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and your answering of all our questions. Next, the next department on our budget hearing schedule is open space with manager Jeremy Grant, page 34.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for all your time and effort and everything that you do for the city. Today is also April 22nd, so I do want to wish everybody Happy Earth Day. Milford did just have a wonderful Earth Day celebration this past weekend with partnership with the library on the Fowler Pavilion. It was very well attended, it was a terrific event. The next event that I'm coming up with is our tree giveaway. This will be the fourth year of doing the tree giveaway for the city, which means that in the past four years, we have gotten 2,000 trees planted with this. And the trees are starting about three to seven feet tall, so they're starting with a lot of life and vigor and are going to make a huge difference in our community as for the decades to come. So, you know, our open spaces are well-used. I mean, we're coming into the springtime where we see our trail systems getting used. We see people taking and venturing out into the woods, go people enjoying the time outside. It's something that we do always try to enhance and protect in the city. But I'm happy to, my budget's as is, so you could answer any questions you have.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, Mr. Chair. People complain about Mondo Pond. It used to be really attractive, but now people like my consistence complain sometimes because people like private funds or people take care of it. And I don't know, I didn't really visit them for some time now, but how's Mondo Pond keeping up?
So Mondo Pond's, you know, had a lot of different partnerships as far as its maintenance. Our public works team does a terrific job on all of our open spaces and the city as a whole. One challenge that we've had in our trail systems is this past year was incredibly wet, and that's been followed up and continued this year. So the ground is so saturated that when we're getting these, you know, these heavy rainstorms, even these normal rainstorms, there's nowhere for the water to go. And it's just not soaking into the ground, which means that a lot of times our trails can be muddy right now. I mean, it's a, it's a problem we're having right at this moment, but as soon as we come summertime and it's 90 degrees, you know, people are going to be saying everything's too dry and hot.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alderman Archaeola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hey Jeremy, good to see you again. I don't have necessarily an open space question, but I do have a tree question. I think I asked you this last year. So one of my favorite trees in Milford fell down on the green. It was a beautiful Douglas fir that was our Christmas tree. That was the one for the tree lining. And I, from what I remember, the root system on a lot of trees on the green is very shallow. And to your point, it has been very wet lately, and I'm wondering what we, if there's anything to do to prevent something like that from happening. So the tree didn't like snap at the, at the trunk, it was just too wet, and so the root system just kind of went feet overhead. And I didn't know if there was a way to safeguard against that.
So, I mean, with some of the evergreens, you know, that is a possibility, with any tree, it's a possibility. But, you know, to, the green actually has very good soil. It's, it's an area that you can actually even hand dig trees and, you know, because the soil is very porous and well. And trees actually do have a shallow root system in general. Most all roots of trees are in the first 18 inches of the soil. So that's actually just a common characteristic of trees. There's, it's a possibility. There's really, there's not really many ways you can prevent something like that from happening, especially when you have, you know, a hurricane or a high windstorm.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mr. Grant. As I look at your budget, I've asked this many times before, I noticed that you don't have any car allowance. Do you have a city car?
No, I do not have a city car.
So you drive your own car. Do you have a gas allowance in the town?
No, I use my own car.
So you drive your own car and you put your own gas in, and it's not in the budget?
Yes.
Well, maybe something should be done about allocating you a car when you actually need one. My guess is that you'll have to ask for it, but thank you.
Any more questions for open space? Alderman?
Through you, Chairperson Vitro, too. Jeremy, hello again. I want to piggyback on some of the comments that was previously made from, about economic development from Alderman Hailey about, we want to work with you. I know the scope of your work. I had the privilege of being, you know, hearing about the grant that you wrote for sustainability, and Milford was designated a sustainable city. It took a lot of work. That's all under open space, but you would never know it. And this year I wasn't involved in Earth Day, but last year you and I ran it. And Earth Day doesn't have a budget item either. The tree replacement piece, which started under Steve Johnson and open space, is invisible here. I guess I'm saying, make this visible. So you go to the administration, whether this mayor or the ones that preceded him, and they put, they, you're able to release funds to purchase trees and then do the, but shouldn't it appear here? So those are two things that are under your auspices that we wouldn't know, and it's just salary. You also are involved in the conservation movement. So when we were having the difficulty about the community gardens just recently, you could have aided us because of the plan of conservation that you're involved in. So I guess I'm trying to find out once again why this is just your salary and nothing else, when those are two things. You can't run Earth Day without a budget, or buy trees without a line item in the budget. And we need to know that it costs something. And it costs something to run around and look at open spaces too. My counterpart just mentioned that, fuel and carwinds. So help us, why isn't there a line item in a more developed budget for the open space position?
Well, with, with Earth Day, we actually have, you know, in the past gotten donations from businesses that take in, you know, do Earth Day celebrations. This past Earth Day, we actually did it with zero funding. So we did it with help, you know, printing with City Hall, you know, printing flyers and everything else. But we're able to do an amazing program on, you know, volunteer work. And, you know, the tree giveaway is another example of, you know, having 40, 50 volunteers that all help. I believe that, you know, the, there isn't a line item in my budget for it, because it's not my department that's taking in doing it. I manage it, but it's the city of Milford that's actually taking in supplying these trees and, you know, helping the community.
We can't run a Earth Day without a budget, but it's not within your bailiwick. The volunteers help, like at Oyster Festival, it's funded, but then the volunteers raise money and do that. money and do that. It could be the same type of thing, because it's getting bigger and bigger, and so is coastal management. So it should be from the city, and then your salary and your activities are funded through the administration. That's what you're saying, right? So it should be somewhere, all right.
Any more questions for Open Space? I don't see any. Thank you, Jeremy, for your presentation and answering our questions.
Thank you, everybody.
The next department on our budget hearing schedule is the Mayor's Office. Mayor Anthony Giannatasio.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the members of the board. Be happy to take any questions that you may have on the mayor's budget. Thank you.
Any questions on the mayor's budget? Alderman Janet, yeah, Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor and his staff. I'm just trying to trace through, because I know we have some salary increases pending, so I believe they're not in this version. Can we just make a note of how much they are and how that's budgeted for?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico. There was a couple of wage adjustments in the mayor's office. One of them was the mayor's administrative assistant that was moved up to step two. You can see that on page 18.
Okay.
And the mayor's salary as well. There was an ordinance that was voted on prior to me taking office, and you'll see the reflection of the salary on line item 4121001.
Yep, and I see the salary in the one position going down, the secretary?
Yeah, that position is open. We are looking to fill that position presently.
Okay.
But that is the base salary. That would be the first step for the new hire.
Okay. And then the, I think the chief of staff increase is the one that was pending in the ordinance that's been postponed?
Correct, that is pending.
What's the dollar amount on that? Can you refresh my memory?
I think that's by the hour, is that right? No. That's a flat 0.25% to mirror the union.
0.25%? What, 2.5?
2.5.
Okay. So it's 2.5% times the 114, 842.
Right, and like you indicated, that is pending at this point.
Okay.
To add further clarification, that would apply to the secretary position as well, which also follows the U2 ordinance.
Okay. And if there's a retroactive piece that's going to come out of the future years, this budget as well, it's just not in here today?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that will come out, for the most part, from the benefit and salary reserve line item, which is on another page of the budget book.
Okay. And that's on for tonight, too, so I'll wait till we get there to ask my questions. All right, thank you, that was it.
Any more questions for the mayor's office? Alderman Pasoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Giannatasio or Mr. Ordici, depending on which is more appropriate. So it's fair to say that any of the potential increases that will be considered further that are going to be dealt with by ordinance are not currently in this budget. That is a separate item. What we budgeted for here is what the current numbers are prior to ordinance being considered. And if it was approved, that would be something in addition to what's here. Is that accurate? I'm just trying to understand if that's what was just said or if it was something other than that. So I'm just looking for clarification. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Pasoli. Yes, to clarify, the salaries for the non-reps following the MSA contracts, I believe they're at the 7122 rates, so they are rates that are prior to the ordinance being approved.
Thank you, that clarifies. Thank you very much.
Any more questions for the mayor's office? Hearing done. I'll move on to the next department on our budget hearing schedule would be the general expenses, page 19, excuse me. Anybody have any questions for, under the general expenses?
Yes.
Alderman Federico.
Sorry, I need a minute to get to that page. Can I just ask, what are duplicating costs?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico, if I may. Those are for the cost of the various photocopiers that are in City Hall and in Parsons. Those are the cost of the leases.
Okay, so $42,000 is the total of the annual leases?
The total is less than that, so we use the savings, if you will, to, for other budget transfers that are needed, or if we have costs relating to printing and binding or to photocopying. Thank you.
Okay, so how much is the, is the actual cost of the copiers? Or the cost of the leases?
I don't have the exact number, but we can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Healy.
Through the chair, back to Finance Director. On hazardous waste collection, that's contractual outside vendor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's through the Regional Water Authority has a waste central.
So that is under a contract, that that's done?
Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
I have a question about the Milford Prevention Council. We give them 2,000, it seems like a paltry sum. Where would be the hidden costs, the in-kind cost of giving them an office and lights, which enables them to do the good work that they do, besides the director being at Bridges? Aren't they housed in Parsons?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, to my knowledge, they are using an office in Parsons, yes.
So do we ever make that explicit? I'm trying to think of, it's not like, sometimes these things start as just a volunteer or small grant, and you give them a little money, a thousand, really support that initiative by giving them a space and an office so that they can have personnel, et cetera. They just had a resource fair this week. They do good work, but it's hidden. So if you're a new alder or long-term alder, is there a way of making this budget? I guess that's what I'm getting to. Maybe show off your hand a little bit more or ours, what we're funding in this community. But that's an in-kind to rent space if you had a smaller, if they had to be a small organization like Bridges. We did rent an after-school program on the Post Road, space 409. It costs considerable amount of money to be a tenant in even any of these and lights and costs to run that short program. So anyway, programmatic costs might be listed. Maybe it's something to talk about with, anyway, enough.
Any more questions pertaining to general expenses? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think this is Peter. Peter, with the copy costs and so forth, does that include the iterations of the publications of these three pamphlets?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Vitale. No, that, the cost of the budget books is under budget and reports, which is the first line item under operational expenses.
Thank you.
Any more questions pertaining to operation expenses? Hearing done. Thank you, Peter, for answering those questions. And Mr. Mayor, the next department on our budget hearing schedule is the Recreation Department, page 82. Mr. Garfield.
Hello, everyone. Recreation is healthy, alive, and really doing great right now. We're adding programs. The programs that we had existing are all full. Swimming, for example, just to take one, we've had such demand, we had to add an entire second wave, no pun intended, of classes, and those have all sold out as well. Summer Playground Program, which is coming up in a couple of months, is already sold out in two of the three locations. I would say that we've shaken off all the hangover of the pandemic, and Recreation is alive and well in Milford. Very excited with the staff. We're finally at full staff, having Ken Cuttino, our newest supervisor, on. And some interesting things Julie said. She was talking about the marketing aspect of things and that we need more of that. We're lucky to have somebody that really focuses on our marketing in Brooke Carlson, and I do agree with her, Julie, that is, that it pays huge dividends. I think part of the reason that our classes, clinics, and programming is so full right now is, has a lot to do with her and her getting that word out. So I do think Julie, she's got a pretty good point there with the marketing. But everything is good in the world of recreation, as far as I can tell, and happy to answer anything you guys would like to know.
Any questions for the Recreation Department? Alderman McBeatty.
How are we doing for the opening of the season for swimming and lifeguards? It was a crisis last year.
It's been pretty positive. We're going to be able to staff three beaches. The last, well, five years, we've been down to two, so we're going to get Anchor back up and running and staffed. Again, mentioning Kenny Cuttino, he has really taken it as his own and really recruited young lifeguards. We've had three certification classes that we've never hosted in the past. All three of them have been sold out. So, not to put the cart ahead of the horse, but it's looking pretty good.
Any more questions for the Recreation Department? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Garfield. Can you tell me what Camp Happiness is, please?
Yep, yep. Camp Happiness is one of the oldest special needs summer camp in the state. It was started by Ed Austin a long time ago, and it continues to grow in popularity. We service well over 100 children from that population. It's a six-week program, currently hosted over at Foreign High School, and the kids are able to do a number of different activities. Based off of that camp, we've been able to launch Milford Adaptive Programs, which is year-round, different programming, different activities for the special needs community. Continues to get better and better. The staff, led by Marlene Sanchez, is, they're special people. They're very special people. We're very lucky to have them all. And I would encourage everybody, May 18th is the production of The Lion King that they put on. They do an annual production, and it's May 18th at Parsons Auditorium. And it will be special. I don't know if anybody went to The Mermaid last year, but it was well worth it.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions for the Recreation Department? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Garfield. This is my first year looking at the Recreation Department budget. I think you guys do great work. I want to understand a little bit more, so I know you collect fees for your programs, and I don't think they're in the city budget, is that correct?
Nope.
So can you talk a little bit about how you determine the fees? Like, how do you determine what's the right amount to charge for things? And how does that kind of ebb and flow through your books?
Okay, so a lot of it, programming-wise, it's based on the instructor and what the instructor, he or she, really would like to make on a program with their time, equipment, and expertise. And then other programmings, it really comes down to what costs we incur over the course of that program and try to get a balance. We're not really in the business of making money, but we'd like to at least stay even or maybe make a little bit so that we could buy something new, something nice, and turn it back into the people participating in our programs.
Okay, thank you. And so, so the cost that we're looking at here is more the cost of running the department? And maybe a little bit of help towards the programs to keep the costs reasonable, is that fair?
We try to look at what the program costs us, whether it's having a supervisor in a gym, the lights, the heat, the building, the new backboard when they break, the floor, the, you know, the number of different things. We try to take that in and decide, okay, that's going to cost us X amount of dollars. We'll try and get close to that.
Okay.
We do okay. We got some winners and losers.
No, I mean, I think you do great work, and if the work you're doing, if you're subsidizing those programs a little bit, I'm okay with it. I'm just trying to understand, you know, what kind of, what your approach is.
A good example, we did a swimming program, and we were able to generate a little bit of income, so we reached out to Public Works, and we were able to buy a new vacuum for the McCann Auditorium.
Okay.
So there's an example of us making a little and then turning it around and putting it back into the program.
Okay, and all of that is tracked how?
Through the beautiful work of Peter Erdey C. and his staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Healy.
That's through you to Director Garfield. Do you have six full-time employees?
Yep.
And you don't have any current vacancies, is that correct?
No, no, glad to say.
Okay. You're seasonal and temporary. The allocation, the partner request that the mayor recommended, it's a significant number. Can you talk to us about how many people are there and what timeframe?
Yep. Our seasonal temps are really, it's year-round. It is 12 months a year, it rotates. We're coming into our most expensive time, which is summer. The six weeks of summer camp, we employ over 100 people. Between the Summer Playground Program, Camp Happiness, that doesn't include our athletic programming, our Hoops by the Harbor, which is another heavy burden because that's grown so big. In the winters, we have supervisors at buildings, pools. We started this year, we have a supervisor at Eisenhower Park, helping with picking up, keeping things nice, things like that. We're flirting with bringing supervisors in to... We're flurrying with bringing supervisors in to look at our more popular places to try and just keep the flow of things, keep the vandalism down, the respect up, and the grounds clean. We just worked with Public Works and Rob Harrigan, who's here, at cleaning up the Orange Ave Turf. It was a big project we took on. We're having it all pulled up to grade, stitched, any mistakes in the ground, fixed. And then, obviously, once we do that, we want to keep it nice. So bringing somebody on in the weekends to kind of watch it. But the seasonal temp budget is strained all year. We have probably the most seasonal temporary employees in the city.
Is there longevity within that program with people that you do employ on a seasonal basis? You're saying it's over 100 people. Is there any consistency, continuity in terms of who's there?
Yes, there is some. We have a number of people who've stayed on with us a few years now, on and off, on and off. These are some people who have full-time jobs in other places. So teachers, they'll come on in the summer, work for us, they'll go back to their job, they'll come back in the summer again.
I mean, within Recreation Department, my observation would be, it could be an opportunity for volunteer services. There's people, you know, within the community that could volunteer under your leadership and supervision from your staff. You've got four supervisors there, and I'm sure they're related to specific, you know, programs or something, and that could be utilized to help augment your activities. And so it seems that with that large number of staff and that budget for seasonal and temporary, you're kind of recruiting on an ongoing basis for certain things?
Yeah, that's fair. You know, most of our staff in the summer are high school students. Traditionally, that's probably most of what we employ, mostly foreign-in-law students for the Playground Program. The swimming, the instructors there, we may have to go outside of Milford because there's a certain level of expertise we need, obviously, for safe programming. But we try to keep it in-house, so to speak, and hire from within the city.
Do you have any volunteer staff now?
Comes and goes, comes and goes. We get a lot of volunteer groups that want to do cleanups, parks, beaches, things like that. We work with Jeremy Grant, who just left us. But he helps our department, and we work with them to kind of put those efforts together, different pickups, things like that.
Yeah.
And we do a lot of community service hours with the high school students. When they call us, we try to keep them busy and get them the hours that they need for their requisites.
Well, I'm glad that I've seen on your website that you, Second Annual Net Gains with Kingsview Partners is coming back, and the beneficiary for that is Camp Happiness this year for any funds that are raised through that program up at the Eisenhower Park Pickleball. And those are the types of programs through tournaments and other things that can certainly augment and help assist your budget, as well as, you know, community-based organizations such as Camp Happiness. So glad to see that's back on again this year.
Chris is excellent, excellent person, great to work with, and we'd be happy to keep rolling with him for 10, 15, 20 years.
Thank you.
Alderman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Director Garfield, good to see you. So the fields that we have are over at the YMCA, those along with Milford Ice Pavilion, the Auditorium at the Parsons. Do we, I'm assuming that when we have travel teams that come in, they're only coming if Milford has a travel squad, is that correct? We don't tend to utilize those for other programs?
So that's the next ball of yarn we're going to untangle. I've tried to untangle a few to mixed reviews.
Okay.
So we're going to tread lightly and do it the right way. The Ice Pavilion would be different. They're a private organization, so they're travel-based. That's their business model. The fields in the city, we do have some probably issues that we need to iron out and work on, and we will do that. I think it started out innocent enough. I think it's kind of grown a little bit that it needs to, we need to just look into it a little deeper and a little harder. Some of that is, is that some travel programs sprouted in Milford that were Milford-based. So we started out with providing them fields, the same kind of idea and model that we have for our Little Leagues and Junior Major Leagues and soccer and football and everything else. I think it's starting to grow a little out of control. So it's something that we're going to look at. But again, we want to do it right, and we don't want to, you know, just lop the top off just to do it. So we want to just make sure we're doing things the right way.
And I agree, and I respect that. And so there's kind of two points to that. One is that as long as Milford continues to have these travel teams, then we have the opportunity to earn and offset some of the expenses in your program by charging for those fields, correct?
My hope is, yes. What I'd like to really see is our department get a better grip on these travel teams that want to come in, come up with a fair and reasonable fee that fits everybody's liking, and we can then turn that money over to Public Works and the field crews that are out there doing the work.
Right. And when our team goes to other towns to play, and you may not know this because I know all these travel teams are private, do we pay to utilize their fields, or is it the home that is utilizing it?
So having a handful of children that participate in travel sports, you pay your program, what they do with that, I don't know.
It's a private organization.
It's a private organization. My guess is some fees are exchanged in trades and things like that. And Milford had a very good deal. I know everyone's familiar with the Gators baseball organization, and they do really good work with our local nonprofit Little Leagues and Junior Major Leagues, setting up camps and exchanging turf time indoors and things like that. So they're a friend of the city. They're not out there to take over and bump us out. I mean, we try to work with them, and they're good to work with. And that's just one example.
And that's a great example of, yes, we want to support these clubs, these teams that are starting up, give them a place to play. And to your comment, yes, doing it the right way to transition it over to something that now supports our city and our programs would be, hopefully, an option that we look further into. Thank you.
Tie on the list.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Recreation Department? Alderman BD.
Through you, Chairperson Vitro, to Mr. Garfield. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. I was thinking when our economic developer was speaking that one of the other things that is a draw for Milford is the youth recreational facilities and all the amazing achievements. So thank you. But I'm going to bring up, maybe it's an elephant in the room, with the exception of the Save Our Schools Foundation and the parent testimony about education. In my, this is my fifth term as Alder. There have been three times only, four times where people were in front of us in public testimony upset, and I read about communication. And all of them are involved in the Recreation Department, the Pickleball Association, and that whole, we changed a decision, moved, the baseball in Brewster Field, and the Community Gardens one. Now, I don't have an opinion about the fees. They're well-run, et cetera. But it seems to me that if the stakeholders had been involved in some of that, those decisions, that we wouldn't have had the umbrage that we had to deal with and then make corrective measures. And that crosses a couple of administrations. This isn't a blame thing. And there was a director before you, and lots of other things are going well. But that seems to be a persistent problem, even with the minor fee of $100 raise, that the people who were very ordnately involved as volunteers in those programs and care about, perhaps expertise weren't consulted, nor were we. We might have had an opinion. We have liaison ships to some of those organizations. So I think that needs to change as a communication strategy, so we're not reacting to objection to a fee increase when people who serve on the commissions weren't included in the discussion, even if the decision is not theirs or ours.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think that was well within a fair grip. I think if you saw the numbers and how far apart they were, our department was simply trying to close that gap a little bit.
We did see the numbers, by the way, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, it was only a $50 increase, not a $100 increase, but it's water under the bridge, I guess we could call it, so onward and upward.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Recreation Department? Alderman Fowler.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Just maybe a quick question, speaking of fees. How much does the department take in in terms of fees per year?
It varies. It's up and down. It could be as much as a million. It could be, it could be all, it depends on all our programmings, things like that. And are you talking, at the end of the day, how much we have left as profit or just overall?
I guess even leftover, like profit.
Yeah, I would have to really lay all that out and put together a spreadsheet. It's all on our system. I just don't have it readily handy. But it does fluctuate. It was non-existent for a few years.
I was going to say, probably COVID.
It started to slowly bring itself out the last couple of years. And this year, I think we've really seen that healthy turn where I think we're kind of getting back with both feet under us.
Okay.
But it was a little lean for a couple of years there.
Just maybe.
It was a little tight.
Alderman Moranin.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I'm not exactly sure who to answer my question, but going back to the revenue, I understand there was a pause with COVID. But why don't we have that information? I mean, the golf.
readily handy?
In our budget report, even if it changes every year, I don't know if the finance director, I mean, obviously, there must be a reason, it's a pattern, but I'm just wondering why.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Moranin. The, I believe you're referring to the recreation program fees for the various programs that Director Garfield and his department run. They are in a special revenue account or special revenue fund. We call it Fund 76 for short. And the director is correct, during the COVID years, the average fee revenue per year fell within the $300,000 range. Prior to that, it was a little over half a million. It has, it seems to have recovered since COVID, and now it's running for fiscal year '22, $662,000. Fiscal year '23, $797,000. And year-to-date, '24, $617,000.
Alderman Healy.
Through you, Chairman, to the Finance Director. So would that be similar, this Fund 76, to when the Chief of Police gave his presentation, and he talked about the academy, and he talked about ancillary funds and revenues, and they were able to, you know, purchase equipment and other things that are not lightened on the budget? But is that the same fee-based account?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Healy. Yes, that's correct. That's the same fund that Chief Mello had referred to, the seized asset account, the private duty, private duty car, for example, those are in the same fund, yes.
Are we maintaining those on a department cost-center basis individually?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Healy. Yes, we are accounting for those on a department-level basis and project-level basis. So there's a project number for each revenue source, and so it's all segregated.
And each department reports back to you on those numbers? So there is that accounting for any, you know, revenues that are reported in your annual report?
Yes, that's correct. The departments report up to Finance, and the Finance Department and Accounting Office records and accounts for these in our munis financial system.
How many departments? When I look at the budget, there's 29 cost-center managers, directors, leaders, you know, there's 53, you know, cost centers that are reporting to us, you know, currently. So do they all, does each department or each 29 directors have this ability?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Healy. I wouldn't say 100% of them, but at least half, if not the majority of the departments have some type of Fund 76 account. For example, Fire has EMS billing, Animal Control has animal control donations, we've talked about Police, we've talked about Recreation. And so, yes, there are departments that have a respective Fund 76 account that, in order to establish that it goes back to the Board of Alderman, because there's usually, there has been a what's called a Fund 76 resolution to establish each account and to have the Finance Department oversee and manage the revenue and expenditure recordings and reporting in the city's annual report.
So those accounts were established by an ordinance?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Healy. Not, technically, not an ordinance, they're called resolutions, Board of Alderman resolutions.
Thank you. And again, Chairman, through you, to the Finance Director. So decisions that are made during the fiscal year, as the chief had indicated in, you know, Chief of Police indicated, in acquiring some additional equipment, the decision-making process on that is that with the Chief of Police, with the Chief Executive, with the Mayor, that making a presentation on something in order to expense those funds for something?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Healy. Yes, it starts with the department review and approval, and then is reviewed up the line through workful approval with the Mayor, the Finance Director, and ultimately, the Purchasing Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Moranin.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair Vitro, again, to the Finance Director. So the Rec Department is a revenue, has a revenue base where, like, the Police Department or the Fire Department, they, well, the Fire Department does now with charging insurance, I guess, so they do have some revenue base. The golf course has like a Fund 18, is it, that? Like, so I'm trying to understand, like, is there a similarity, or are they in totally two different arrangements? I'm just trying to get a feel for it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Moranin. The golf course, and I'll also add the marina, those are enterprise funds, and they have a budget that is called an annual fund, they're in the budget book. These special revenue accounts are not enterprise funds, but they are, as the name of the fund indicates, special revenue. And so they're revenue dedicated from a particular revenue stream and the expenses to dedicated purposes.
Alderman Healy.
Just an additional follow-up through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Finance Director. As we close out the fiscal As we close out the fiscal year, on any of these accounts, 76 funds per department, are there any carryover opportunities?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Healy. Yes, these special revenue funds, whatever is not spent at the end of the fiscal year, carries over into the next fiscal year. So there is a carryover opportunity each year.
I was just, you know, my next question would have been, does any of this end up in the unassigned balance account? That's my favorite.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. No, they are separate from the general funds, unassigned fund balance.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To you, Peter. So all of the 76 accounts, the Board of Education also has their non-lapsing fund account as a 76 account also. So the projects can be spent, the monies can be spent to help negate a lot of the costs of the Board of Education budget.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Vitale. Yes, they may act as a reserve.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Recreation Department? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Finance Director. I'm trying to, when I look at a department like the Recreation Department, just get an idea of the scope and the volume that's going through that department. Is there any reporting you can share with us on the Fund 76 funds, the special revenue accounts? Is there anything you can share, you know, in a follow-up email?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico. Yes, we can share summary budget performance reports, for example. And we all have records of all the transactions and that flow through and it is involved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That'd be great.
Any more questions for the Recreation Department? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Garfield.
Thank you.
The next department on our budget schedule is the Law Department with City Attorney John Burcham, page 24.
I don't have presentation per se. As you can see, my budget is flat, subject to contractual wage adjustments that have been made. There are seven employees in the City Attorney's Office, five full-time, two part-time. There's, paralegal position is vacant at the current. It was posted within the last month to fill of the folks that work there. Myself and Matthew Woods, Trial Counsel, were part-time. And I am the lone, non-represented employee within that department. But as you can see, other than that, the request for operational expenses, capital outlays, and the majority of the personnel services accounts are the same as they were last year. Happy to entertain any questions?
Alderman Casey, I'm sorry.
To you, Chair, to Attorney Burcham. Do you have a Fund 76 account?
I don't generate revenue, Alderman Casey. I know we have, through you, Mr. Chair, Alderman Casey. No, we have a blight lien account where we've had blight lien. We've used monies to help address blighted properties that we draw from.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
If you need a will, Alderman Casey, or anything, we can talk after the meeting.
Alderman Archiolo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Hi, John. So what was the software that you requested? Because it looks like there's a disparity between what you requested, which was $25,000, and then the Mayor recommended $1,500, and then the Board of Finance put it at a buck. And I was just wondering what that software might be.
Mr. Chair, through you, Alderman Archiolo. So the computer software that we requested is basically a docket management program. So I'm not completely well-versed in it, but this board graciously funded the purchase of a docket management software program several years ago. It was the first that we had. And I know my private practice and Alderman Smith can probably help me with this one, is that it's a bit antiquated over there. So when I need to find a document, it was on hard drives and desktops. And what we were trying to do is find a software system, a legal software system, so that anybody could come in. Then if I was to get hit by a bus or be replaced tomorrow, somebody would come in and say, oh, where is that legal opinion regarding whatever subject? And they'd be able to go and say, okay, your legal opinions are here, your brief bank is here, this is that. Right now, my docket management system is Tony Weeks. She knows where everything is. She can find things. So the $25,000 was an estimate to look at a couple of different softwares that law firms use, other municipal town attorney, city attorney offices use that we had asked around. The $25,000 is actually a little shy of where they are. They're usually, it's a huge outlay upfront. Most of it's about $35,000 to $50,000. And then there's licensing that you pay. But we're doing fine.
So if that were restored, it would take some off Tony's plate?
Well, no, she'd probably be heavily involved in the implementation of it, but eventually, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. John, it's been a few years now that we've had a line item for a position that we've been hunting for and not filled. That is of the risk manager, and I know it's being taken care of because it's given the idea is, I think Tony is acting as that individual. But are we looking? Are we not looking? Do we need one? And why, if not, do we have a line item for the salary?
Mr. Chair, through you, Alderman Vitale. You're correct, but a little incorrect in the sense that historically, yes, the risk manager had been left open and Tony served as the acting risk manager for a couple of years. And that position had remained vacant. She was named full-time risk manager in the last couple of years. The paralegal position was open, and that is, we're now actively trying to fill that. So it flipped. Tony is, there's no one more acting interim risk manager. Tony is the risk manager.
So we don't have a paralegal? We do, we don't?
Yes, that's why, you're correct. And that there was an open position. It just, it flipped.
I thought she was getting a stipend for acting as in not filling the position. Now, it's more than a couple of years this position has been open, right?
Sure.
So what, so are we looking for a paralegal now? Or is that not easy to find? Or what's happening?
Mr. Chair, through you, Alderman Vitale. Yes, so we had Kim Kell, a risk manager. Kim passed away. Tony served as the acting risk manager for an extended period of time. She was receiving a stipend. She became the full-time risk manager, got rid of the stipend. The paralegal position has been open for a year or two plus. We're now looking for it. We've made do. And I will say, you know, much to the credit of Tony, that she's been able to handle both. Do I think we need a risk manager? I mean, a paralegal? Now you got me confused. I do believe we do.
But if it was so important to the office, you think that we would be getting one? I don't think they would be hard to find. I would, I don't know. I don't know that.
They are hard to find, especially.
Are they?
You can call yourself paralegal. There may not be a paralegal, but.
Obviously, that's.
I was raised in the municipal world of do more with less.
Well, that's a good thing. Yeah. But so then we can eliminate the paralegal. But is that a, obviously, it's a certified position. It's, what are the credentials of a paralegal? It's a little more than what? Or, and when you say it's difficult to find, we, you know, I don't know. Is the job advertised?
Yes. I'm looking because I knew the question may came up. Minimum qualifications, bachelor's degree in legal studies and one year of experience providing paraprofessional legal assistance, or an associate's degree in legal studies and three years of experience. There are some that have paralegal certificate, but with no paralegal experience. Experience does go a long way, but.
Well, hopefully, we can get that position filled pretty soon. Thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Alderman Beatty.
Just to follow up on the answer, thank you. Through you, Chairman Vetro. Is there a timeframe, a convention about how long a vacant position, if not filled, then comes off the books, regardless of the good intentions and the salary? Just so it's not confusing. I mean, you've been around.
Mr. Chair, through you, Alderman Beatty. No, I don't know of how long the shelf life it stays.
Three to five years, and then we take it?
There's been, there's been plenty of unfilled positions in other departments in my experience that have not been filled. Again, it's up to this board, frankly. This board creates positions and have budget slots. You can give it and take it away. I can only advocate to keep it. But ultimately, that's, that's your job.
I wonder, we should find out if there's a convention in other towns about that and let's see.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Alderman Healy.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the City Attorney. Your part-time position and everyone else in departments, so you're one of seven, and you're part-time. You have six full-time people and you're risk manager. There's a transition between a paralegal to a risk manager? Is that what's going on? And then you have an open position for a paralegal?
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alderman Healy. There are seven positions in the City Attorney's Office, five full-time, two part-time. Trial Counsel is part-time. I am part-time. Everyone else is full-time.
The salary that's recommended for the Mayor for the part-time City Attorney, it just says City Attorney. It doesn't say part-time. But of course, the Assistant City Attorney is at 120-plus, and your salary is roughly 93. So are you on a contract and then you're working on an hourly rate? I'm not sure how this works.
Chairman Vetro, through you, to Alderman Healy. No, I'm not on a contract. I'm appointed. I serve at the pleasure of the Mayor.
Okay.
And I am required to give 25 hours a week to the City of Milford. And I'm paid at a prorated amount of the salary of the full-time, which if any of you've looked at the U2 ordinance over the last couple of months, the U2 ordinance reflects the City Attorney as a full-time position. That was, the City Attorney was a full-time position for a couple decades. And upon Marilyn Lipton's retirement, then Mayor Richatelli hired Max Case on a part-time basis. And that set the trend of the position which I'm now in, which is 25 hours a week.
But as the Chief Executive for this department, which is a very important department, you're 25 hours. And the Assistant City Attorney is a union employee?
Yes.
So we have two part-time Trial Counsel, very important, yourself, part-time. And the day-to-day operation is managed by the Assistant City Attorney who's in?
No.
No?
I manage the day-to-day operations.
With 25 hours?
I'm required by 25 hours, Mr. Healy.
Okay. So you're putting in much more time, is what you're saying?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Alderman Healy. I would say I am. And I have, and I will continue to do so. I make sure that the job is done.
I'm certainly a strong advocate for volunteerism. I'm a volunteer for the city currently elected. And so I'm remunerated less than you are, and I'm proud of it. And one other observation, I looked up the Department, the Law Department, on the directory of the Milford website. There's 40 departments. The Law Department is, can't find it. And if it could be added, it would be a good thing. It's a very important department. And then list out, you know, the people that are there and within the department, because it's one of the primary functions that people look to when they're looking for a legal resource, to be able to make contact and know where to get, you know, the right person.
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alderman Healy. I can explain that. I think historically, my office, as by charter, represents the Boards, Commissions, this board, and city employees. We do not represent the electorate and the citizens of Milford. So in terms of contact, I don't control the website, just in terms of if someone called us, to your point.
Right.
We don't like to engage because it could compromise the city's position.
So not having the information on the website, you're just deferring that if somebody's got a question, they would contact their automatic representative, they would contact the Mayor's office? Is that what you're saying?
I don't provide legal advice to citizens when they call in.
Right. Okay. The Assistant City Attorney, when we were recently reviewing some salary information, there was in a publication that the Assistant City Attorney is in a union. Is that person eligible for overtime?
No.
No? It's just straight salary?
Yes.
Okay. Because there was a document that said that the Assistant City Attorney earned in 2023, $181,000 plus. So I just didn't know how that occurred.
Don't believe everything you read, Alderman Healy.
Okay.
Okay?
That's all we're asking.
No, understood. That was an error.
It was.
I mean, there's some retro compensation because the contractor was resolved, but there was some sick leave and vacation time that was viewed as compensation that was not paid out. So that was not accurate.
Well, at the final budget conclusion of the Ball of Alderman's session a year ago, there was a reference to the Assistant City Attorney and Trial Counsel being upgraded within the minutes of that meeting. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm referring to what you're referring to. You referred to a newspaper article in The Register about top 20 wage earners, and it had the Assistant City Attorney making a number that she did not make.
Okay. But you mentioned something about a contract being settled, or there was some renumeration for some other purpose?
I was referring to the collective bargaining agreement, of which the Assistant City Attorney is a member, which covers July 1, 19 to June 30, 2024, which was just resolved at a couple of years in retro, retro payments made.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Burcham.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
The next department on our budget hearing schedule is the Public Debt Service, page 78. Does anybody have any questions for the Public Debt Service? Alderman Casey.
Yes, I think to you, to Peter Arici. How much is our interest rates currently on the year? Nah, yeah, you know, it's kind of, kind of, there's various rates that are out there, bonds or that. But how much is our, currently, the interest rates?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Casey. On the general obligation bonds, the interest rates are close to 4%. In the last bond issue that we had in October of 2023, In the last bond issue that we had in October of 2023, the interest rate, I believe, was 3.87, so close to 4%.
Is it rising or do you see a trend of rising or decreasing?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Alderman, I haven't seen a trend of it decreasing. It's been held at that level, there's been a slight increase. I've seen in other cities and towns, for example, in other sales, but it hasn't increased in a large way, but it has not decreased yet.
What is our bond rating?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Casey, our bond rating is AA+.
Thank you.
Any more questions pertaining to public debt service? Hearing none, we'll move on to employee benefits, page 84. Anybody have any questions for employee benefits? Alderman Federico.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the finance director, I have a couple of questions similar to how I asked the other night about the self-insurance contribution. So it's going down, let's see, the decrease is a little over $3 million. Can you explain, expand a little bit more on what's behind that and how the process works? I know in my past experience, we would get a letter from the actuaries and they would say, this is what we recommend you contribute. Is that similar to your process? Do they give you an exact dollar or a range?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico, each year, the healthcare consultant and actuary provides a detailed report to project what the estimates will be for healthcare claims, the medical, the prescription, dental, the stop-loss premium. So they will provide a report, they will update it as claims information comes in in subsequent months, and we will discuss that report and I will use it to help come up with the self-insurance contribution that you see listed on page 84. And I believe at our previous meeting, I had described the overall process of using that report and how I need to come up with the budget for the health insurance fund each year and that the, looking at the other revenue sources that go into that fund, the remainder has to come from the general fund. So that's why you see this line item and then on a subsequent page, the line item related to education, health insurance.
Okay, so do you have discretion over that number? Am I being clear?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico, I believe I understand the meaning of your question. There isn't much discretion because it's based on the numbers, so we have to look at, to put it at a high level, what is the total cost for the health insurance fund for the year, for the fiscal year? And that's what the actuaries helped me to come up with and we look at that throughout the budget process. And then I will look at the other revenue sources, namely the premium cost shares that go in from the employee contributions. I also have to look at all of the expenses. There's also contributions, for example, related to employer contributions to the health savings accounts for both Board of Education and City. So for the health insurance fund, as I said earlier, has to have a balanced budget. The total expenditures for the fiscal year must equal the total revenue. And these two line items are critical to making sure that we have that equation met.
Right, and the balance of the fund at the end of the year is part of this equation as well, right? That's what you said?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, to a certain extent. I would also add that for best practice, the finance department has tried and has always recommended that we do our best to try to have at least 10% of the total cost of claims reserved in that fund balance, that is ideal. But as you can imagine, with the challenge of our budget each year, sometimes we've had to use some of that fund balance to help with the general fund budget.
Okay, so in the budget before us, does this anticipate a 10% reserve or less?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, it anticipates less than a 10% reserve.
How much approximately?
Yeah, just a moment.
Sure.
So we, if we have, and these are just, you know, rounding the numbers, but if we have a fund balance of about 6 million and you use four and a half for this budget, that leaves 1.5 million, so that's approximately half of the 10%, so perhaps close to 5%.
So I was jrolling that down, I want to make sure I got it right. So we had a 6 million reserve, we're going to use four and a half of it, so we're going to be left with 1.5 million reserve, but a 10% reserve would be 4 million? So we're two and a half million below a 10% reserve?
Yes, in that iteration, we'll have to see at the end of the year if there are any savings for fiscal year 24, that will help to increase the fund balance further, so we may go above the 5%.
Okay, and is there a reason why we didn't do the 10% reserve this year?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico, as I said, that the reason we didn't use it this year was to help mitigate the rate of increase in the mill rate. We do that with the appropriation of fund balance in the general fund as well, so it's the same concept.
Okay, so this is to offset other expenses in the city budget?
Yes.
Okay, so this helped us to achieve a below 1% budget increase on the city side by lowering the reserve here?
It does help with the overall budget, yes. I mean, in particular, as you can see, it helps to offset in specific terms, the health insurance contribution specifically. So I would clarify that it's directly offsetting that increase, it's an indirect offset to the other city departments, I would say.
Right, okay, I understand. How about the pension? Is it a similar process? I know it's not health insurance claims, but are actuaries involved and make a recommendation on that as well?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico, it is a similar process, the actuaries provide a pension valuation report every year, it's dated as of July 1. I believe the last valuation was 7/1/22, they are working to finalize the 7/1/23. We don't have that final valuation yet, but the actuaries always help us during the budget process to come up with a good estimate and it's usually very close to what the pension valuation will be. And we use that actuarial estimate to come up with the pension contribution. And this is, used to be called the actuarially determined contribution and it's now called ADEC or A-D-E-C for short and the E is for employer.
Okay, okay, so when I look at the city budget as a whole, right, there's, there was initially about a million dollars change between 147.8 million, which was the final Board of Finance recommendation, and 146.7 million, which was last year's budget. So I get an increase of 1.1 million and that's the 0.77% that we've seen in the paper. We calculated the other night that the Board of Education, I'm sorry, the contributions to the education budget from the city budget are about 31 million and change and they were 33 and a half the year before. So we've got savings there of 2.3 million. The city pension is going up a million and a half, but the health insurance on the city side is going down 3.1. So if we take our million change and we add and we subtract from it those other changes, if we back those things out, we get an increase in the city budget of $5 million. And that's what I'm trying to understand because that's about a 6% increase. So as we go through the upcoming meetings, I just want to get a better understanding of where those funds go. So I'll be asking questions to that effect, it's nothing to answer now, but it just confirms that 6% increase. Thank you.
Any more questions on their employee benefits? Hearing none, move on to the next account, the insurance and bonds. Any questions pertaining to insurance and bonds? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next account, claims and refunds. Is there any questions pertaining to claims and refunds? Seeing none, we'll move on to benefit and salary reserve. Is there any questions pertaining to benefit and salary reserve? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the finance director and the mayor's department. I know we talked earlier, mentioned earlier tonight that we have a set of increases that are pending, that are tabled. Can you tell us what the full dollar impact would be if all of those were passed? Is the funding in here enough to cover those? Is it intended to cover those?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico, I believe, and this is an estimate, that the net impact for those non-reps following MSA and the ordinance, if it were enacted to this budget, is approximately an increase of about $156,000. And a portion of that is related to fiscal year 24, the year before, retroactive, and the remainder for fiscal 25. And anything related to fiscal 23 was already covered, as I said, because those salaries were frozen at fiscal year 23 levels in the budget.
So does that include the retroactive pay, the 156,000?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico, I'll take a step back and just in summary, explain briefly how the benefit salary reserve works. Each year, as we do the budget, if there are any union contracts that have expired or any non-rep ordinances that have expired, we say, okay, all the others that have settled, we put in the contractual wage increase, for example, 2.5%. And for those that have not settled, we will estimate that 2.5% in this benefit salary reserve item. And that amount will help us with, because funds do not roll over at the end of the fiscal year in the general fund, but by having it accrued in this account, it will help us with legislative budget memo transfers to fund those retroactive pay. But if you look at it, from a budget perspective, each year, for example, the rating agencies ask, they know which contracts have expired and they'll ask me and they'll ask the mayor, you know, have you budgeted for those annual increases? And they're always looking to make sure that we do to help smooth the impact, otherwise you'll have a larger fiscal cliff, if you will, from one budget year to the next. But if you do the math, I believe when you raise the base salaries, the year involved is in this reserve, so technically, we could lower it a bit. But mathematically, the year before raises the budget. And it's covered through the budget memo transfer, but the rate of increase will always be there from the previous fiscal year to 25, if that makes sense.
Still confused. So the year before or the retroactive piece is in here or it's sitting in a fund somewhere because it's already been reserved?
It's in this account. So what we do is, and that's why you see the account negative in the expense column for 23 expense, because what we do is we have to transfer the balance that has accrued in this account to the regular, to the accounts that need the funding for the retroactive pay, namely the regular wages and other wage accounts like overtime.
Okay, so the 430 that's here is sufficient to cover the non-rep raises that we've been reviewing as well as any upcoming union contracts? Projected or estimated?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, technically, yes, is estimated, that is the goal. But I will say that because of how the budgets are very tight, we are, we're very conservative with this line item, because I don't know what the final result of the negotiations will be until the contracts are settled. So I will estimate, for example, 2.5%. I will do my best to apply that to the base wages. For police and file, I'll include the overtime, the holiday pay, but sometimes it's difficult to include all the pay. And so we will rely on savings, perhaps in the wage accounts themselves, for example, to supplement a shortfall in the benefit salary reserve if that were the case in a given year.
Okay, that's clearer, thank you very much.
Any more questions regarding benefits and salary reserve? Alderman Pacelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Aradisi. That was a lot we just went through here, and I think I still have just a little bit of confusion as to how this applies to the potential passage of an ordinance that's before the board, that'll be considered presumably next month. Am I correct in my understanding that if the, and if this is beyond what we're supposed to talk about today, we can certainly revisit it at that next meeting, but if that ordinance was to pass as it is currently before the board, a portion of the increases within that ordinance, I believe I'm hearing you saying, I believe I understand, are in this line item. But am I also correct that a portion of the increase that's with the changes of steps and some of those other non-typical increases are not in here? And so therefore, there'd be other action required related to the? And so therefore, there'd be other action required related to the budget if that ordinance passes? Or am I incorrect?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Paselli. The, the, I'll call it the customary increase for the non-reps that follow MSA and the two and a half percent cost of living, that was included in this line item, but for the five positions that had the restructuring of the salary, that was not included here.
So if, if that ordinance was to pass, how do, how does this board fund the amounts that were approved by ordinance if it, they're not in this budget currently, or in this proposed budget currently? How do we get to there?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Healy. Those customarily each year have been handled through a technical change that I would recommend to the Board of Aldermen on the eve or at the budget vote. And that's how we would update the budget to reflect any union contract or any non-rep ordinance for that matter that would be settled prior to the budget vote.
So you'd essentially be telling us that we've passed an ordinance at that point and now although we have to vote on it, we're essentially obligated to pass that technical amendment in order to fund the ordinance that we had just approved prior? And that presumably also would require a supermajority as a technical amendment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Paselli. Yes, it would require a supermajority, just like any other budget increase.
Okay. So it would be likely to, well, that's interesting, actually. I don't know if it would. Okay. So we could be in a bit of a, a spot if something passes by a simple majority, but then later we need a supermajority in order to actually fund the technical amendment through the budget. So something to consider. I just wanted to understand the process. I'm not interested in debating the merits of that ordinance today, but thank you.
Any more questions pertaining to benefit and salary reserve?
I have one more.
Alderman Biddy.
I need a clarification on something that Alderman Federico asked. Does that, when we were looking at that four thirty figure as the salary piece that was in the budget and you were explaining to us, thank you very well about, now it's called the A-D-E-C, the pension July every year, the actuaries tell you how much you need. So you put in the salaries, but it doesn't really tell the impact on the pension, which we will not get for two more years, right? It's done, the actuarial report is going to be done. And so if those raises are given to senior people who are near retirement, there would be an effect on pension that we wouldn't see here and thinking about. Is that correct?
Through, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Biddy. Are you referring to the five positions, for example?
Yes.
Okay. Well, technically, the actuaries do an estimate themselves. They know which contracts have settled, which haven't. So they, they estimate, like I do for this salary reserve, what they think the cost of the increase would be and they factor that in. Technically, you're right, they're not aware of those five, but looking at the large numbers, if you will, I, I don't think it would move the needle of the ADEC significantly, in my opinion.
Okay. And we're not doing that now, we're not doing the numbers, but we just needed to know this new ADEC, as you explained, wouldn't incorporate that, whereas even if some other straight salary appears in the budget. Thank you.
Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Finance Director. I'm sorry if I asked my question incorrectly before because I was asking about the five positions. So the costs of the five positions increases are not in the four hundred and thirty thousand?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico. Technically, no, they weren't part of my estimate for the four hundred and thirty thousand. But as I said before, sometimes it's, you know, it is a challenge how much to increase that reserve. So in the, in the history of all of our budget cycles, as I said, there are times where we may have to dip into other accounts, like other regular wage accounts that have savings in order to make up for any shortfall here. Thank you.
Okay. And, and thank you. Very clear. And do you have the total, if we were to pass that ordinance as is, do you have the total dollar impact or could you get that to us?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico. I, I believe that was provided by our H R department and Assistant City Attorney. They had a spreadsheet. So if you add up the columns for each fiscal year, I believe they provided the, the total overall cost. The amount that I'm giving you was to get down to the exact amount if I were to increase the salaries accordingly in the budget. I tried to come up with an estimate for just looking specifically at this budget, Board of Finance versus Board of Aldermen.
Okay. I will, it's in a spreadsheet because I don't have the spreadsheet.
It wasn't that. We got it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we got it through, we got a handout on the, on the whole process.
The handout had, these are the new salaries. The handout did not have previous salaries or the change, but I'll look for the spreadsheet.
Any more questions pertaining to benefit and salary reserve? Alderman Healy.
Just, just a point of order because this is a pending ordinance, there's a lot of conversation about it. So I, I think we're just going to move on to the next item because obviously this is going to come up again and, but point of clarification, what was provided to the Board of Aldermen on, in March at our meeting were ten pages of salary groupings with no other real information, there was no explanation in terms of financial costs either at the ordinance or at the, at the approved mechanism for looking at it. And then back in April, there was submitted again town salary sheet pages, five of them had a key to it and some color code that was not on the eve. So there was a spreadsheet that the City Attorney's Office did have and that was not part of the package, which is something that we had been asking for, for some time. So we've been going through this process, trying to discern, and as you see tonight, this labor process as to what is the financial aspect and impacts for FY twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five? And it should have been very clearly succinctly presented to us in that type of a format, but we're going to get there next month, apparently. Thank you.
Any more questions pertaining to benefit and salary reserve? Seeing none, moving on to private school textbooks. Any, any questions pertaining to private school textbooks? Seeing none, we'll move on to education audit fees. Anyone have any questions pertaining to educational audit fees? Seeing none, move on to school debt. Anyone have any questions pertaining to school debt? Seeing none, move on to employee benefits, non-teaching. Anyone have any questions pertaining to employee benefits, non-teaching? Seeing none, we'll move on to the last, the last account, which is education slash health insurance contribution. Anyone have any questions pertaining to education dash health insurance contribution? I don't see any. I will entertain a motion to recess until Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion is made in second. Fall in favor? opposed? We're in recess. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Secretary.